There are many faces of wage theft victims. Let Hillsborough County be the face of wage recovery. If you believe your old wages, call 813-903-3430 to see if you qualify.
Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangle in machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags!
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No, Mommy, no plastic bags.
Do your part to keep our recycling bag-free. Trash the tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit TampaBayRecycles.org.
Many of us think that the planet is ours, that we can treat it however we want, and let the next generation clean up the mess. But the truth is, if we don't make changes now, the effects could be irreversible. You see, one piece of trash isn't just one piece of trash. It's one of thousands of pieces of trash that are polluting our waters and killing marine life. So the question is, what do you want to be? Do you want to be the generation that protects our planet? Or the one that throws it away? Help keep our paradise litter-free. Find out how you can make a difference in your community by visiting KeepTampaBayBeautiful.org.
Hello, Mother. Something smells good.
Good morning, sweetie. I'm making breakfast for you. Can you clean the bacon pan for me?
Sure thing. No, Billy, don't do it. It's bad for your pipes and bad for the environment.
Don't listen to him, Billy. Just pour it down the drain and forget about it. What's a little grease going to do?
Actually, there's a lot that grease can do to damage your home and the environment. Picture this: When you decide to pour fats, oils, or grease down the drain, you are letting those substances harden up and stick to your pipe walls, causing clogs and backups in your home that can eventually lead to expensive repairs. And can also cause gross smells and a nasty situation for your neighborhood and the environment.
You can smell it!
Instead, when the substance cools down, stick it in a plastic container, make sure the lid is sealed tight, and drop it off at your nearest cooking oil recycling station in Hillsborough County. That way, you're helping the environment and saving your family money. So they could buy you that new skateboard you've always wanted.
Yeah, alright.
It's a win-win for everyone.
New skateboard? Oh, yeah. Your way is definitely better than mine. Let's recycle that grease.
For more information on how you can recycle your fats, oils, or grease, visit HCFLGov.net/Cor.
Hey, the new house looks great. How are you liking it here?
Well, I...
You wouldn't expect this in your home.
What?
Why on earth would you do it in ours? Hillsborough County put waste in its place.
Rising flames, toxic smoke. The forest is on fire. I repeat, the forest is on fire. Now is the time to panic. Fire is dangerous. Fire cannot be stopped. Fire will destroy everything in its path!
Whoa, 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 stop the film. Believe it or not, guys, fire isn't always that bad.
It's mad with power. It's after you, your homes, everything you own.
Hey, stop. None of that's true. Listen, everyone, even though forest fires can look very scary and dangerous, sometimes the fires, they're actually what we call prescribed burns, and they do a lot to protect and conserve our environment.
Until they spiral out of control, causing wreckage and wreaking havoc.
Hey, narrator, we're good. I got this, okay? Hillsborough County's Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department conducts these burns often in various areas of our county, and our natural resources benefit in a lot of ways. For example, prescribed burns can stop natural fuel from developing, which helps prevent major forest fires. They also prepare the ground, creating the perfect place for plant growth. And they help prevent the spread of diseases, keeping our trees healthy. Those are just a few ways how prescribed burns are working for our environment and how Hillsborough County is working for you. So you see, not all fire is bad, no matter what the old-timey narrator says. For more information, visit us online at HCFLGov.net.
Okay, I see your point. Can I show more fire?
No.
Thank you all for coming. I called you all here because we are Asian Tiger and Yellow Fever mosquitoes, and we have a job to do. We're going to our new home soon, and I want everyone to be comfortable. I also want all our bases covered, so I'm going to go over everyone's assignments. Tommy, you're on tire duty.
Good evening, and welcome to the MPO Board Meeting and Public Hearing. Will everyone take their seats, and we're going to ask for an invocation and prayers given by the Board of County Commissioners, Chaplain, and Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and our stakeholders as we make decisions that are critically important for this county and for this region. Lord, I pray for our world leaders. I pray for the members of our armed forces and our first responders. I pray that you will keep them safe and comfort them and deliver them home safely. And I ask for all of these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you. Before we get started, I have a memo to read into the records. This is from Commissioner Ken Hagan. It says, "Due to previously scheduled meeting, I'm unable to attend this evening's meeting. Please read the reason into the records." Thank you. We'll pass it over to the clerk. We have minutes from our May 1, 2018, meeting. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review those. I have a motion to approve the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Kemp, second by Councilman Matuscalco. See no further discussion. All those in favor, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Poses likewise, motion adopted. Moving to public comments on non-hearing items, those are not the... Those are items that we will not be discussing during the public hearing, but any items other than that, so everyone, anyone that wants to speak on those has three minutes. So if anyone wishes to discuss, come forth, sir. Please state your name. You don't have to give your address, just state your name. Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Raymond Clark. What else would you like to know?
Well, you're the one who wants to speak.
I'm working on my eighth business called Five Star Entertainment Revolution, and in 2016, I put a plan into repurpose Tropicana Field, and I'm going to buy it for $86 million and hold three superstar concerts a week for charity, generating $20 million for charity each and every week. Now, Mr. Sternberg doesn't know, but he's going to get out of my stadium as soon as possible, and if he doesn't vacate, I'll get rid of him. I mean, I'll get his stuff out. But I'm setting the tone of this meeting because today, I was served with a trespassing warrant by an unreputable unethical company who owns a big piece of Ebor City, and I spent most of the day fighting through the bureaucracy to get to the office of the Attorney General, where I now have to give a report on what happened today. So the purpose of me being here first is to let these people know not to be afraid to stick up for what they believe in, and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else that's picked a point in time? Seeing none, thank you very much. We're going to move into committee reports, online comments. Ms. Torres.
Good evening, Gina Torres, MPO staff. Committees all recommended approval of the items on tonight's consent agenda, the Public Participation Plan amendments, and actually, there's a suggestion there to coordinate with the Autism Friendly Community Initiative. They also approved the school safety study and top-ten report, and the Policy Committee forwarded for your approval the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council inter-local agreement. Committees also recommended approval of your action item on the Transportation Improvement Program with the following comments. The CAC recommended approval of the TIP priorities for fiscal year 2024, but passed a motion regarding priority number 32 to recommend deleting the funding request for construction or reconstructing of the State Road 60 and downtown interchangeers on I-275 pending reevaluation of the environmental impact study. The Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee members expressed concern about the level of funding in the TIP for single-occupant vehicles and related infrastructure in comparison with transit pedestrian and cycling infrastructure. It was suggested that more details about resurfacing and intersection projects would help members to better understand the investment levels in those modes. The Policy Committee directed staff to identify as a priority improvements needed at Hart's Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility, to schedule presentations for the board on the I-95 express bus service in South Florida, including DOT's perspective and how the service is working in the managed toll lanes, and public-private partnerships for joint development of bus rapid transit stations. They also asked staff to bring back, for future discussion, a possible name change from Hillsborough Metropolitan Planning Organization for Transportation to Hillsborough Transportation Planning Organization. The Tampa Bay TMA, the Transportation Management Area Meeting, they talked at length about the regional transit feasibility plan, and a placeholder will remain on the priority list for determining the catalyst project or projects pending peer-review process. So that's your committee reports. And I think I, if it's okay with you, I'll move into the online comments. And please, for the record, the MPO Board members have all of the comments in full in their folders. I just read a little summary and acknowledged people who maybe couldn't come to today's meeting. There were five Facebook posts. Trista Brophy wants to see transit as the best mobility option, such as light rail, rapid transit, so that driving a car is not needed for every trip. Doug Jessup is concerned about unsafe roads for cyclists and pedestrians, and that we're living with planning decisions from decades ago, and expanding roads was the only focus. Mauricio Rosas posted three posts to Facebook, and he asked that when we use federal funds, that we rely on DOT's Green Book guidance that calls for corridor preservation, historic and archaeological preservation, scenic byways, and visual impacts. And he shared two videos. One was on the impacts I-275 and I-4 had in the African-American community, and one was of him driving from West DeChapel to Tampa and demonstrating what he thought was a better use of that place for the express bus lanes for commuter rail. Rick Fernandez also left in a post that he discusses the evolution of TBX and suggests different ways of prioritizing the TIP projects, and I'm sure he'll... He's here tonight, so he can expound on that. The TIP hotline that we had for folks to call in, we had just a couple of calls there. Chuck Leonard and Catherine Clermont identified themselves as senior citizens who were desperately hoping that Route 1, Hart's Route 1 on Florida Avenue, would extend to Bear's Avenue. Dave Becker saw the TIP signs on Morris Bridge Road and was happy to learn that there were bike and pit safety projects in the TIP. Sandra Diaz was concerned about speeding on Lewis Avenue and that a light is needed at Gray. And now just the emails are left to discuss. There were 25 emails regarding Bayshore Boulevard, and I'll read their names into the record. Alex Hawk, Nick Friedman, Gina Nowor, Amy Holland, Catherine Feigl-Ernhardt, David Spurk, Elizabeth Corin, Don Sullivan, Frank Sammartino, Leah Trimble, Melissa Kavanaugh, Megan Hemmick, Tim Muller, Vanessa Ruckel, Alyssa Lee, Augie Contero, Harry Coleman, Melissa Hartman, Rainey Shahal, TJ Cholteri, Alex Engelmann, Marcus Moats, Nick Friedman, Paul Hemrich, and Megan Peronello. And they're calling for pedestrian actuated crosswalks, 25 mile an hour speed limits, enforcement using alternative monitoring, speed monitoring, adding Bayshore to the Vision Zero priority corridors. They requested a study considering Bayshore a park and not a highway with the option of removing travel lanes, and that Beta Bay also be reconsidered for complete streets and Vision Zero practices. There were 10 emails from Seminole Heights residents, Chris Healy, Meredith Weeks, Susan Stucci, Jennifer Velez, Mark Gates, Cindy Hitchcock, Susan Long, Jean Catherine, Judy Taylor, and Tim Keaports. And they're identifying some dangerous roads, specifically asking for funds to be set aside immediately for intersections, Hillsborough with Ola, Hillsborough at Florida, and Hillsborough at Central, for different things like lighting, four-way stops, enforcement, street painting, and others. And lastly, were emails kind of in a general nature. Jay Botch, the president of Westshore Alliance, supports the TIP, specifically the I-275 State Road 60 interchange reconstruction and the future replacement of the Howard Franklin. Sam Sudman, he's the secretary of the Sun City Community Center Association, he supports the TIP and urges acceleration of the Big Bend interchanges and widening of 19th Avenue. Mauricio Rosas, he noted that 22nd Street by Claremont Elementary had no signage or sidewalks. He was concerned about that and lighting and crosswalks. Tim Cross requested rejecting the I-275 toll lanes. Sue Johnson requested free park and rides along I-75, specifically at exits like State Road 60 and Sun City. Charlotte Greenbarg requested information on the amount of money the MPO and Planet Commission has spent on consultant studies. Alex Hawk urged making Vision Zero and complete streets the top priorities in this year's TIP, that we have too many high-speed, wide roads in urban neighborhoods. Sharon Calvert had several emails about the 2045 scenarios and how and why priorities are chosen, asked about TBX's public input process, and questions on consultant selection. Robert Sawalish was concerned about the entrance to the VA Hospital, is asking for traffic signals, turn lanes, crosswalks. Rachel Armt, thanks Hillsborough, Plan Hillsborough for participating in the McKay Bay Oyster Shell Project. There was 156 linear feet of new reef added to McKay Bay. Mark Haven was a professor at YSEF, thanked Plan Hillsborough for hosting two of his master's students, Dana Lazarus and Chris Mormon. I'm going to miss Dana. She helped me a lot with Vision Zero. And lastly, Angel Reed, whose mother, Layla, died on 40th Street, has saw in the news the highlighting of Vision Zero on the 15th Street event, and wants to be involved with Vision Zero commemorating her mother's life and to inspire change. So those are all... And thank you for bearing with me, but I... We promised people that we would read their names into the record, so thank you.
Very good. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Move now to the approve the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Councilman Corneille to approve the consent agenda. See no further discussion. All those in favor, let me know, saying aye. Poses likewise, motion is adopted. Now moving to the public hearing to adopt the tip for October 1, 2018, to September 30, 2023, we will have a presentation given by Sarah McKinley, first and foremost.
Good evening, Sarah McKinley, MPO staff. Tonight, I'm going to go over the transportation improvement updates for fiscal year 2019 through 2023, as well as our Transportation Improvement Program priorities for fiscal years 20 through 24. For those that are not familiar, the tip is the Five-Year Work Program. It lists all of the major highlights and changes between the years. It lists all of the phases and for funding for each of the projects. It's reviewed at the federal level by USCOT, and then for consistency purposes, we also include the capital improvement programs from each of our jurisdiction agencies. It's organized with, it has a narrative in the front that sort of goes through our project prioritization, our financial plan, again, highlights what's changing, and then, again, we list our jurisdictions for compatibility purposes. As far as the MPO's role in the tip, we sort of have twofold. There's the priority list, which is the second half of this presentation. That is sort of the MPO's wish list. It's mainly based off of federal and state pools of funding that we get to prioritize. There's also, there's sort of, of the federal funds, we about get $15 million a year. Those are broken down into transportation alternative funds, as well as surface transportation program. As far as the state funds, we have the Transportation Regional Incentives Program, as well as the Sun Trail Program. And like I said, if you look at the first four programs within that Table 2, again, we'll go through this in the second part of the presentation, those are the monies that we get to prioritize for the most part. Then we get into our major investments for economic opportunities, and those are sort of bigger-ticket items, and we'll go through that. The MPO can remove projects from the Transportation Work Program, but they cannot dictate how the money is spent. All right, where are we in this process? Last June, we updated both the work program and the priorities. From there, we... Sorry. We had the public hearing in June, and that's when we updated both the work program and Table 2. As far as what's in the work program this year, this is a breakdown of what the monies, their sources are. We have about $541 million in federal funds, 736 in state funds, about $255 million in local funds, and then $22 million in tolls and bonds, for a total of about $1.5 billion in this year's work program. I have a couple charts that I included in the presentation. This is to show you the breakdown of what the work program and the agency programs, how they're broken down by work type. As you can see, we did have an uptick in standalone walk-bike programs. This is up about a quarter of a percent from last year, so gradually, we are trying to build this program. But again, those are the standalone walk-bike. There's also a lot of walk-bike improvements that are included within some of our resurfacing and maintenance projects. We also have a little under 12% in our transit and transportation demand management projects, and then about 14% in the intersection signalization projects as well. This year, road widening, or those capacity projects, accounts for just under 15%. This chart's just in here to show you a breakdown of those percentages and how they compare through the years. As you can see, there's been a sort of decrease in the roadway capacity projects, and then again, there's that little uptick that I've shown you in the standalone walk-bike projects. This chart is in here just to show you how, again, the breakdown of the projects within our jurisdictional partner agencies, their local capital improvement programs. As far as the funding sources that the MPO gets to prioritize, again, these are those state and federal programs. This is a breakdown of those federal programs. And so, as you can see, there's the Gibsonson Drive interchange at I-75, Big Ben at I-75, US-41 at Pendola Point, Hart's bus replacements, as well as their CAD-AVL. This is sort of the technology on the buses. And then we have some walk-bike improvement projects. Of the projects that are listed there, Kennedy and Hillsborough are the two that have construction funds. So of the other four that are on there, we'll see those moving forward throughout the years as they get construction funds. So what's new this year as far as the work program? The way that we look at this and the way that we prioritize projects, we look at how our Imagine 2040 plan was shaped. That included five programs. These are preserving the system, reducing crashes and vulnerability. Those are our safety projects. We have our minimizing traffic for drivers and shippers. Those are those congestion management. The smaller-ticket item, looking at interchanges, intersection improvements, our real choices when not driving. This is our transit projects, or the bigger-ticket transit projects, as well as our trail program. And then again, we have our major capacity projects for economic growth. Those are the bigger-ticket items and the other additional funding sources. As far as preserving the system, we have some new resurfacing projects on I-75, two at US-301, and then on US-41 as well. Again, like I mentioned, Hart bus replacements, we're going to continue to move those forward, and you'll see that that's still a priority of ours for future years. This year, we were able to secure $10 million for funding for the Hart technology on the buses, the CAD-AVL systems. That's in fiscal year '23. You'll see that that's also a priority to move forward into future years. We also were able to secure $1 million in improvements for the Marion Transfer Station, as well as some monies for CNG duplex compressor improvements. As far as bridge repair, we have I-75 over Riverview Drive, as well as US-41 at Alfire River in McKay Bay, and then the Hillsborough portion of the Gandy Bridge. For our safety projects, we have some design work that was added for the George Road. This is the complete streets that the MPO did a study a couple of years ago, looking at from Dana Shores to Town and Country Greenway. We also have some work at I-275 at Gray Street. This is to sort of create a cul-de-sac and to be a trailhead along there. We also have some work in Plant City on Reynolds Street, and then, like I mentioned, Kennedy Boulevard, we got some construction funds secured for 2021, as well as the Florida-Tampa Street. That's going to be the Heights Mobility Plan that we'll talk about later. As far as, again, like I said, our smaller-ticket items, but bigger bang, the intersection interchange improvements. We have MLK at 50th Street with an intersection improvement, Hillsborough Avenue at Nebraska and 34th, some signal updates, and then US-301 at Bloomingdale Avenue. This is sort of adding a through lane for the northbound traffic to help with the congestion that they see there. It's almost like a punch-through to get traffic to I-275 and Solomon Crosstown. As far as real choices when not driving, again, these are our trail projects and our bigger-ticket transit. As far as what was funded this year, we have the South Coast Greenway. The county did receive a $500,000 earmark for that, and that'll be for design funds along 19th. We also have the Green Artery. There were design funds for segments DNE that were allocated this year, and then moving for forward with the next segment of the Green Spine. As far as those major capacity projects for economic growth, we have some improvements on the Veterans at State Road 60, as well as I-275 from Kennedy to Lewis. This is the operational improvement that was presented a couple of months ago. It's also known as the punch-through, to help alleviate the congestion coming off of the Howard Franklin Bridge. And then again, we have the new funding towards I-75 at Big Ben, and there was a $5 million earmark that was included as this year as well. Again, and then also US-41 at Pendola Point, and then in addition, 62nd at the CSX intermodal entrance. As for what's in the tip this year of the work program for the Tampa Bay Next projects, the Howard Franklin Bridge has $71 million in it for design build in 2020. The other sections all still are pending the supplemental environmental impact statement. The segment from I-275, or I-275 from MLK to Beers, that's pending a scope of a PDNE to look at other possible operation improvements, but not looking at the express lanes on that segment. This map I put in just for reference. You guys should all have it in your packet. Now for the second part of our presentation. This is to go through the tip priorities. This is Table 2 of the document, and it's to go through what has not been funded or what is not fully funded. These were updated last June at the public hearing then, and then in February, we begin meeting with our jurisdictional partners again. From there, we coordinate and work on their priorities. They then send a list, or formal letter, I guess, to us by March 15. You should have had those in your packet as well. And then by March 31, we present those lists and those priorities to FDOT and give them all the Transportation Alternative Program applications, SU fund applications, so that we can start getting those projects worked into the work program. As far as how we prioritize our projects, like I said, those first four boxes or programs that you see there, those are really what we use to prioritize our transportation alternative funds, the surface transportation program funds, the trip funds, and then also the Sun Trail funds. So for preserving the system, we look at transit state of good repair, as well as bridges and resurfacing, reducing crashes and vulnerability. We look at the total crashes along a segment, as well as the bike-ped crashes, and then also the crashes per mile. For minimizing traffic for drivers and shippers, we look at the planning time index, as well as the travel time liability of that segment or interchange or intersection. And then for our real choices when not driving, we look at the density rating of the population based on that segment or that trail. And then again, for our major capacity improvements for economic growth, we look at the job density along those projects. Are they within a major employment center, as well as what's the forecasted congestion along those segments? As far as Hillsborough County goes, I-75 at Big Ben, that continues to remain a big priority for them. You could say priority number one. You could say priority number one. This year, they increased the ask to the total funding needed for the total build, and that's about 48 million for the ultimate build-out. We're continuing to move Gibsonson Drive ahead. There's an additional 2 million that's needed for construction. We had two new requests for two movable bridges at Platt and Columbus Drive. We're moving forward requesting 500,000 total for planning studies. We also requested some monies of 500,000 to move forward with Vision Zero corridor study. This will look at the eight, top 20 corridors that came out of the Vision Zero that were within unincorporated county, as well as five intersection improvements along State Road 60. Those, we actually received a Transportation Regional Incentive Program or TRIP program application. And then looking at 19th Avenue Northeast, this is going to, like I said, there's the earmark for design for the trail along that. This will also look at the possibility of an interchange justification study, as well as ultimately widening this roadway. And each of these projects for Hillsborough County, we received appropriate applications for. The Upper Tampa Bay Trail, this is still looking at the alignments to be determined, so this is still pending some approvals as far as moving forward and funding. And then we're continuing to prioritize the Tampa Bypass Canal Trail, as well as the South Coast Greenway, to move those through future phases. As far as the City of Tampa goes, we are still prioritizing the Green Spine Cycle Track. We'll move forward with 3B as the newest priority for that. And then the modern streetcar extension, that continues to be a priority as it enters and continues along the FTA funding process. As far as new priorities that we receive from the City of Tampa this year, we have El Prado from Omar to Bay Shore. This is looking at some complete street improvements. We also have Doyle Carlton at Laurel Street. This is looking at some bike pad improvements, as well as a roundabout to sort of fix that intersection. And then we received a Safe Routes to School application for Sulphur Springs Elementary. There are two projects, the West River Greenway and the South Tampa Greenway, that we're still waiting for some updated applications. So those are not going to move forward at this time, but then we do have the Green Artery Segments DNE that we're requesting the design funds be moved to construction As far as Plant City goes, there hasn't been any major changes of the priorities this year. We are asking that we move forward with Park at Coronet Road and move this forward for construction funds. As far as Temple Terrace, we're working with them to work with the county on the Davis Road Extension and trying to get that to go through the process and move forward. There's an additional 3 million that they need for construction for that. They also requested this year a study to look at the shared-use path that they have proposed between Temple Terrace and USF. We've requested that that be included as part of FDOT's Fowler Avenue Study. As far as HART goes, like I mentioned, we're still prioritizing bus replacements to move forward. We ask, in the past, we've asked for 4 million, and we're continuing with that request. We also, again, are trying to advance those technology improvements for the buses to get those in a sooner year. They're sort of needed yesterday, so we're trying to work with them and DOT to move those forward. We're also asking for 3.5 million in fare box replacements. This is in addition to that Flamingo program. This is actually to fix the boxes or replace the boxes that are on the buses today, as well as some bus stop repairs and then some maintenance repairs to the existing facility. We're also requesting monies for total repairs to the existing facility. This is 30 million in total, as well as 60 million for construction of a new maintenance The Port Tampa Bay Plant, or priorities, these have not changed from the last year. We have the on-port properties and the off-port properties. Those listed in the Channel District, those are largely from the Portmaster Plan. This is to redo that area on the east side of Channel Side Drive, as well as part of Channel Side Drive. We also have some priorities at Hooker's Point and Port Red Wing. And then our off-port priorities, we're continuing to prioritize these as major projects for economic growth, so you'll see those there. The port is largely working with DOT to get these through. The biggest one that's currently funded and expected to move forward with construction funds is US-41, the grade separation there. As far as priorities that have come from MPO studies, we have the Dale Mayberry pedestrian overpass. That study has ended, and now we're working to prioritize that or get that looked at as part of the I-275 SCIS along that portion. We're also moving forward with the Heights Mobility Plan, continuing with future phases of funding for that. I mentioned George Road had design funding. We're hoping to prioritize or continue to be able to prioritize that for construction funding. And then, as I mentioned, Kennedy Boulevard has moved forward with their safety funds as well for construction. As far as the transportation management area leadership group, there was not any major changes in the priorities of, for this group. Again, for the interstate modernization, it is still pending the supplemental environmental statement report. As far as the regional transit catalyst projects, there were no major changes to this as well. As you can see, Hillsborough County is doing a peer review, and we are waiting for that peer review to update those projects as well. Some of our regional projects, again, this is those, the Transportation Regional Incentive Program dollars. As I've mentioned, we have submitted applications for Big Ben Interchange, as well as those five improvements, or five intersection improvements along State Road 60. And then we're continuing to prioritize the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, the Tampa Bypass Canal Trail, the Green Spine, the I-275 Greenway Extension, and the South Coast Greenway, all for Sun Trail monies. All right, so that was it. So now we get to our recommendation, our recommended action is that we approve the Transportation Improvement Program for fiscal years '19 through '23, as well as the Transportation Improvement Priorities for fiscal years '20 through '24. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is any questions of Ms. McKinnon before we move to public comments? Seeing none, we're going to move into public comments to take a point in time. Each person coming forth, we have three minutes. I'm going to call these two names, so one person can be ready after the next one. The first person we have, I think it's pronounced Zhenya Nichols, and followed by Kent Bailey.
My name is Zhenya Nichols. I apologize for my broken English. I'm Russian. Don't hold it against me, please. I live on Bay Shore, and I'm going to speak about Bay Shore, not because it is my neighborhood, it's because Bay Shore belongs to everybody in Tampa. Bay Shore, in fact, belongs to everybody in our nation. Bay Shore is the place where people come and enjoy the beauty of our world, our Tampa, and it is not about neighborhood and Bay Shore, it's about everybody. I live several blocks from Knights Avenue, and you know about the horrible tragedy that took place there. I didn't know Lilia or Jessica. I cannot even pronounce their last names still, I'm sorry. But I was the one who took the candle the night Jessica died, no, actually, Lilia died. And I went to Memorial, and I sat on the curb, and I watched the traffic flying by in the Memorial. Few people slowed down and expressed their condolences to me, thinking that I'm a member of the family. I said, "No, I didn't even know them, but this is our loss." Most of the people were driving by. They knew what happened. Everybody knew what happened, and it was not enough for so many people just to slow down. And I realized, yes, you can say to people, "Please, slow down. You gotta slow down. You should slow down." You have, you can say to people, "Oh, you have to look left and right when you cross the road." But is it enough? No, it's not enough. Not too many people on this planet have internal speed bump. We need to have something substantial, something around ourselves, something physical that will bring our ever-wandering, ever-wandering modern mind into the moment. The road has to have constant, constant reminders to us to slow down. We have to create a safe environment, not safer environment, safe environment for people to cross Bay Shore. For seven years on Bay Shore, crossing Bay Shore on my wild was life appreciation trip. Every time I made from one port, I part over, I thought, "Yes, I made it today." So many people didn't. Why don't we put the crosswalks on every single street on Bay Shore? How much of the paint we need to pay for? I'll pay for the paint. I'll get the people on Bay Shore on every single street, and in one day, we will cross these zebras in front of all of our streets. We can do it. Why do we have to wait for four years for phase two, three, four? I don't know which phase to be implemented. Simple things like that can be done already, right now. While you tell us, "Slow down," we tell you, "Speed up, do something."
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Bailey comes up, those who are speaking, you have a timer in front of you there. You have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, that means you have 30 seconds. You still need to start winding down. Just want to bring that forward. Kent Bailey, followed by Rick Fernandez.
Good evening. Kent Bailey, Chair of the Tampa Bay Sierra Club with 18,000 members and supporters. You know, almost every single candidate running for public office will run with a pledge that they're going to improve public transportation options. I can't remember a one who ever said they were going to reduce public transportation options. But we're not going to solve our transportation problems without the funding of smart solutions that actually work. And that means we're going to have to take public transportation at least as seriously as we take baseball. More people per hour will move down an interstate lane that is open to all traffic than can be transported on that same lane if it's taken out of service for cars and reserved for express buses. And labeling those express buses BRT doesn't change the number of people that are going to move down that lane. BRT is a great idea, operated at street level with stops that are outside the traffic lane, where people can quickly move onto and off of clean, modern electric buses. Yesterday, Dr. Tom Hall from NASA's Goddard Institute told the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council that our community is more at risk from storm surge in any city in America. He said that a storm surge from a 100-year storm could do $175 million worth of damage to our community. Moreover, he said that sea level is likely to rise 30 inches by the year 2060, changing the probability of a 100-year storm to a 30-year storm, unless we immediately and dramatically reduce carbon emissions. With that reality, how can anyone consider using CNG buses? Yes, CNG is cheap today, but that's because of a 2005 Alaberton Act that causes poison aquifers, swarms of earthquakes, and increases carbon pollution every single day. Investing in fracked gas means tying future operating costs to a fuel that will become unaffordable once the Alaberton loophole is closed, which it surely will be. On the other hand, the cost of harvesting fuel from the sun for electric buses continues to decline, while the cost of sunshine and the sunshine state remains constant and stable at zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Fernandez, followed by Matthew Suarez. Before you start speaking, Mr. Fernandez, I think some people are yielding their time to you. Is Debbie Johnson in?
I don't know that she's here. She was here at the sign-up.
Thomas Bivins? Connie?
Rose.
Connie Rose? So these people have signed up to give you their time, but they're not here?
They signed in.
They signed in. That was the protocol last year.
That was the protocol?
I guess we didn't specify in the fine print.
Okay, we forgot, I guess, we didn't specify, as Jack directed, said in the fine print that the people needed to be here to yield their time to you, but since we didn't specify it, you have 12 minutes.
I don't think I'll yield all of that, but I appreciate the courtesy.
Is staff here to turn the air down? Maybe I'm getting old and having hot flashes or something, but I'm hot. Could someone get someone to do something about the air in here, please? Thank you. I know I'm old, but you are little bit.
No, it's hot. Go ahead.
We good to go? All right. For the record, my name is Rick Fernandez, 2906.
You don't have to give your address anymore.
No need my address? Okay. I'm the President of the Tampa Heights Civic Association and also serve as Vice Chair of your CAC. I speak for the Civic Association. I do not speak for the CAC, not in a representative capacity. This is my fourth annual TIP review. I started coming here in 2015 when TBX first rolled out, so happy anniversary, three years, four of these. I suspect that this hearing today is going to be a little different than the ones that we have shared together over the last three. We just saw an example of that or heard of an example of that with a very passionate presentation from the first speaker. I anticipate you're going to be hearing about CSX. You're going to be hearing about Gold Standard BRT. You're going to be hearing about Safe Streets. All of those things are important, and if I had 24 minutes, I'd talk about all of them. I'm all in for them, by the way. I think we certainly are in a position where we need to be thinking about all options when it comes to transit in Tampa. And my hope for my hometown is that we will eventually become a car-optional city. Probably won't be in my lifetime, but there's a young man back here by the name of Fox. Maybe we'll make it for him. For me, my intention today is to continue dancing with the one that brought me, and that's my old friend TBX. So my comments today are going to be about the Tampa Bay Express project. I have my button. People keep telling me TBX is dead, but I don't believe it is, so I'm going to keep talking about it until I'm sure. Every year, my friends and I have come here for relief, protection really, asking for your protection from the Florida Department of Transportation and their plan to widen 275 and I-4, destroy neighborhoods, install managed toll lanes, and explode the downtown interchange malfunction junction, as we lovingly refer to it. All of those things causing great damage to my neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods, Ebor City, Seminole Heights downtown, and on and on. It hasn't really mattered what you called the plan, whether it was TBX or Tampa Bay Express, or with evolution over time, Tampa Bay Next. Whatever you called it, the components, those things that I just listed, basically remained the same and continued to hang over our head for the last three years. We've gone away effectively empty-handed from these hearings, year after year. We've come here, I've come here every year, asking you to remove TBX from the TIP, and I leave every year with you telling us basically, "No, that's not going to happen." So we go back to our respective corners, and we talk among ourselves, and we make friends with folks on the other side of the aisle, and things seem to happen behind the scenes, which has been helpful. And I have to say, there have certainly been good ideas and good initiatives planted from this podium and from that dais over the last three years. For instance, last year, we had a young man stand up here, Josh Frank, who is here in the audience today. I don't know if he intends to speak, but he came to tell us about his idea about deconstructing Interstate 275 north of the downtown interchange and developing it as a grand boulevard. Think the embaladaro in San Francisco or the chamselisse in Paris. Probably seemed a little outlandish to some of you if you were hearing it for the first time. From the looks on some of your faces, it may be outlandish to you even now. But regardless of that fact, that idea survives. The long-range transportation plan that the MPO runs for 245 is ongoing now. It is in process, and Josh's idea is part of the discussion. For those of you who are within earshot of me, be you here in this room or downstairs or on TV, be alert, because over the next months, probably no more than two months, you're going to be seeing a survey, and in response to that survey, you're going to be asked to offer your opinions regarding certain development scenarios. And among those scenarios is included a And among those scenarios is included a Beltway and Boulevard concept. So if you think the idea of a Beltway and Boulevard or just the Boulevard makes sense, pay attention and pump up the volume. This year, District 7 Secretary Gwynn, just two months ago maybe at one of these hearings, told us that managed toll lanes that had previously been identified for insertion on 275 north of the downtown interchange, same area that Josh wants to develop as a boulevard, that those managed toll lanes are no longer going to be inserted there. That was great news, and it certainly suggested that District 7 is listening to us. The fact that we no longer have to face those toll roads on 275 northbound of the downtown interchange means that that stretch of the interstate doesn't have to be widened or widened as much. And that also suggests that there will be less right-of-way and less damage, less right-of-way taken and less damage done to Ebor City and Tampa Heights. So again, great news. And Secretary Gwynn, thank you publicly. I know you're back there somewhere. Thank you for that. And just today, we heard that we've got free rides on the trolley. I mean, how much better does it get than that? So it's just a gift that keeps on giving, this TBX thing. Now, there are other examples of good ideas and goodwill that have developed over the course of the last three years, but it's important that we remember TBX is not dead. And I will suggest here in the most strenuous terms that the most threatening aspects of the old TBX project still live on as possible alternatives secondary to completion of ongoing SEIS studies. And what am I talking about? If, Mr. Elmo, man, if you could? What I'm talking about is, in your tip, if you're following along in your hymnals, it's page 25 of the hard copy document. It's the tip, Table 2, Section 32. There are eight line items. Now, not for nothing, TBX has lived in Line Item 32 for the last three years. I don't know why, but that's always where it seems to wind up. And it's still there now, although it's kind of hard to find any of the usual verbiage associated with TBX. You don't see words like "express lanes," for instance, or "right-of-way acquisition." What you see in the left-hand column, actually the third column over from the left, is a description of what effectively is the geographic body of Tampa Bay Express. Those are all the various sections of the Tampa Bay Express project, running from the Howard Franklin Bridge to the Polk County Line, 275 through I-4, right through downtown, and also the 275 corridor from Malfunction Junction north up to Beers. So in that column, you have the body of the dead TBX. Two columns over, what you have is a group of studies, SEIS studies and PDNE studies. The dead body of TBX is being studied. See if some people get the irony of that. Why we have a dead project being studied, I don't understand. I cannot put my finger on that or connect the dots as to why that even makes sense. It doesn't make sense to me. If TBX is dead, let it die peacefully, bury it, and let's move on so it can stop sucking oxygen out of the room. My request and my written comments to you, which I incorporate by reference, is that we strike Line Item or Section 32 from the tip, and we close out these studies. I could go on about that for a while, but even with my 12 minutes, there's not enough time. But let me get a little bit more detailed on a specific point when I say that the most troubling aspects of TBX live on as secondary aspects of these studies. The downtown interchange, malfunction junction. If any of you have ever seen the planned reconstruction of the downtown interchange under the old TBX, you'll understand what I'm about to say. That was a catastrophic situation in the making. It, if allowed to move forward, was going to create incredible damage to the Tampa Heights area, to Ebor City and surrounding communities. That DTI, the downtown interchange, is under study now. It's under SEIS study. And as FDOT tells us every opportunity they get, because of SEIS requirements, the old TBX reconstruction version has to stay in the mix. So we now have three or four different alternative variations for the downtown interchange. One of them is basically the old TBX version, which is the nuclear option for Tampa Heights and Ebor. At the other end of the extreme, there's a version which barely touches us. But the world we're living in now in 2018 is that when that SEIS is completed in 2019, there's the possibility that there is going to be a preferred alternative identified, which is very similar, if not identical, to the old TBX version, which puts us right back where we were three years ago. So that sort of Damocles continues to hang over us while the study is taking place, again, for a project that is supposed to be dead. So if you think it's a bridge too far to strike Line Item 32 completely, then I would suggest that we identify specific elements of the old TBX project that this board would consider unacceptable in Tampa, no matter what the SEIS or PDNE studies say, and that that communication be given to the Florida Department of Transportation so they understand if your plan is to blow out Tampa Heights or Ebor City, "We're not going to accept that. Go on to alternative number two." But somehow, that message needs to be communicated, and the citizens that live in the impacted areas need to have this cloud removed from their heads. I've been asking for that for three years. I asked for it again. I have no great expectations about what's going to happen here tonight, but at least be aware of the fact that that is the state of affairs for us, and that's what we're living with. I thank you for your time.
Matthew Suarez, followed by Nick Friedman.
I just wanted to talk about the documentation over the last three years.
Sir, can you come up and just give your name?
Yeah, Matt Suarez. So yeah, so since 2015, we've been going at it. We continue to document. So just want to go ahead and allow everyone to know that we're nowhere near complete. There are some issues with the current studies associated that District 7 Office has currently been developing. I just got the latest documentation in relation to natural resources, cultural resources and such, this past Monday, or last Monday, actually, from District 7 Office. I just wanted to identify that this is from a memo in which, back in October 2017, the Preliminary Alternative Screening Evaluation Technical Memo, this is all that was given for the boulevard study. This is all that DOT did for the boulevard study, was incorporated into a five, excuse me, a 12-page, nope, it was amended down to a 10-page memo. So I don't think that that is a proper study of an alternative. It's actually just disappointing, Mr. Gwynn. Another thing I want to go ahead and identify is in the latest cultural resources studies, we are not using proper information. Basically, in Appendix A, in the cultural resources study, there are a series of maps, mappings associated with the historic grids of the city of Tampa through the different areas where the segments that are under study for the SEIS are going through. These grids...
Hold up, hold up. You want to show us something on your phone?
Oh, sorry. Anyway, the grids are not displayed properly on those maps, as far as the historic grids go. They don't reflect the grids of the census, and they don't reflect the historic row and the historic block schedule of the city of Tampa. This is from 1963. This is right around the Fortune Street Bridge, and that block schedule, based on what was on my phone, is not scheduled. So we'll continue to hit hard on DOT. Their studies are still not impressing, and they still need to do their work. And I don't think that they have properly studied the boulevard or taken it into consideration in a proper manner. Also, remove the items from the tip that Mr. Fernandez had eloquently talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Friedman, followed by Michelle Cookson.
Hey, good evening. First of all, thank you guys for your service, and in particular, thank you for your deference and consideration for Bay Shore Boulevard safety, which is the crown jewel of Tampa. It is a beautiful linear park, but it does have a four-lane highway running alongside of it constantly as a major commute and thoroughfare route. And of course, park and highway do not really go hand in hand. I come to you guys today as a proud father of two young daughters. I wouldn't, you know, it's Father's Day weekend. I got my Father's Day tie on, and I want to see my daughters grow up in a city where they can feel safe, in particular, can feel safe walking or biking. I moved here to Tampa about 10 years ago, I should say. I'm a proud Tampanian. About 10 years ago, when I first moved my business here, my business partner said, we came down here from DC, he said, "Don't walk around, because if you're walking, people are..." People don't walk here. He said, "They're going to either think you're homeless or your car broke down." And 10 years later, I can say the city has certainly transitioned and changed. It's become a much more pedestrian and bike-friendly city, but we have a long ways to go. I was proud to see today, there was an article that came out that named Tampa the most livable city in the United States. And I think, you know, there's an opportunity for us to make that buzz live up to its actual reality. So I'm here to speak on behalf of Bay Shore Safety. I recognize that some safety measures are already in motion, the 35 mile an hour speed limit down from 40, the installation of some crosswalks are in progress, as well as enhanced enforcement measures. But given the fact that I've seen numerous fatal or near fatal accidents, of course, including the most recent tragedy, which was extremely unfortunate, I had actually been emailing city officials for over three years, asking for improved safety measures in Bay Shore. And so I created a website, makbayshoresafe.org, along with one of my neighbors, and we've created a change.org petition, which already, within the first week, has over 5,000 signatures in support of Bay Shore safety measures. Namely, in the short term, what we're asking for is a reduced speed limit to 25 miles an hour, increased and additional pedestrian-first crosswalks that make it nearly impossible for vehicles to speed on that road, and of course, enhanced enforcement, whether that could be via automated cameras or be via more police presence. Long term, we would like to basically lobby for the closure of the waterside, the two waterside lanes, make Bay Shore a two-lane road. We believe there could be a public-private partnership in the closure of those two waterside lanes. Numerous business corridors within walking distance of Bay Shore are eager to help support that redesign, and the downtown partnership channel side and Water Street stand to directly benefit. If you're familiar with Highline in New York, that's sort of what we're envisioning. So, you know, for those of you who are city councilmen or county commissioners, I urge you to kind of take a look at both those short-term measures and long-term redesign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle Cookson, followed by Mauricio Rosas. As Ms. Cookson will have 12 minutes, because Mr. Jim Shirk, Mary Hill, and Ann Thompson yield their time.
Good evening. I don't believe I'll need all of that time, so that'd probably make you happy to hear that part. Michelle Cookson, 6002 North Sawani Avenue, Tampa, Florida.
Let me interrupt you. From now on, you don't have to give your address. Just your name.
Okay, sorry. Such a habit. I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, conditioned and trained. So I'm back again this year, and I'm here primarily this evening to plead with you to stand up for Hillsborough County. Stop allowing this bullying of our county for this fake BRT project on the highway. We are the economic engine in the heart of this region. We should be leading on transit efforts, not getting strong-armed into a boondoggle. This project that's being pushed is not the highest-ranked by the public, people who took a lot of time out of their lives to go out and participate in this project and weigh in and say what they want. What's being shoved down our throats is not what they said they wanted, and it is not going to meet our transportation needs for Hillsborough County. I'm just sort of, I don't really, not express it other than to say that I'm incredulous at the continued apathy, the seeming willingness to just weakly accept as gospel this scam job that's being sold yet again by the state and other parties. It's bait and switch for a highway project, a highway widening project, and nothing more. I really sincerely am asking you, have you examined this BRT plan that's being pushed and called transit? They want Hillsborough County to pay the majority of the money into this, to take all of the impact, to inherit all of the maintenance costs and operations, and to get zero benefit. Why on earth would Hillsborough County agree to this? Meanwhile, funding for heart continues to be slashed when it's already shameful, shamefully underfunded, especially for a bus system in an area of our size. And daily, as you see tonight with so much turnout, daily, citizens are being mowed down by cars and killed. We pay for these streets, and we have just as much right to utilize them on foot and on bike, and also maybe to drive cars and not die because of that, too. We need safer roads, and we need real transit. How? How about we take some of the existing studies that we've spent millions on and act on them? Start with areas that have greater density, redevelopment needs, and opportunity for success with better rider projections by the CSX line. You need that segment from South Tampa all the way up to USF. Start there with that segment and connect those areas. It has the most riders per mile. In the RTFP study, how about backing a plan that's designed for success, not one with ultimate failure baked right into it? Transit systems have grids, not spines. So let's start, and then let's connect them up, and let's start connecting this entire county and see the subsequent economic growth and prosperity. We need this MPO to place greater priority on projects that demonstrate commitment to investing in our neighborhoods, that make streets that are safe and accessible for all travelers, not emphasizing car travel only. Transit's needed on our commercial corridors, not on the highway. I really want to request that the MPO fund real gold standard bus rapid transit on the Florida Avenue-Tampa Street pairs. Fund a study to take a serious look at the boulevard project, which you've heard about already this evening. Identify more cycling corridors and increase bike and pedestrian safety to all of our parks and schools. I'm part of a citizen-led effort that is committed to smarter growth, transit solutions, and better transportation investment, and we are just getting started. We are building coalition across this county every day. We will get this done. We have a vision for how we want to live and to get to a prosperous community and future. Your delays and any lack of action will not stop the people. So we really need to get serious and take immediate action, or those of you that are elected, by the way, will soon find you're going to be replaced. The time is now. We need transit. Now, we must put people first. Thank you.
Mr. Rosas? Followed by Lisa Monteleone.
Mauricio Rosas. Here is a citizen, but also I'm actually representing what's called Seminole Heights Dog Pack.
Mr. Rosas, hold on. Is there a way to get more volume on his microphone? Start him over again, three minutes. Get some more volume.
Testing, one, two.
Check one, two. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm here to representing Seminole Heights Dog Pack. We have well over 300 members who are all local residents. Our focus is safety. The man who was killed just a few days ago is not here, but there's a wheelchair representing him. We need safety first. In this year alone, we have pedestrian died on Waters Avenue crash, Ruskin, pedestrian off Plant City, Sly Avenue, a 91-year-old woman who was crossing the street on Del Mayberry got mowed down, and of course, the gentleman who is not here and the wheelchair is empty for him. Kids in, this is Nebraska Avenue in Hillsborough, not very safe. This is the Chamber Lane High School area, also not very, very safe. Even with all that, it's amazing that we still have these incidents, and we have demonstrated, there are studies, and look, 20 of the most dangerous stretches of roadway in Hillsborough County. Yet I do not see this being addressed in the tip. I don't see it being addressed at the BOCC either. Very, very concerning. In case you haven't seen it, here's One Road and Brandon. Next, near the Gibsonton-Boyet area, one of my favorites right here, off of Fletcher Del Mayberry Highway, near the area of Bear's Avenue, the Bears, that entire Fletcher Avenue across. If you ever rode the bus, and I do, I've actually been told by my partner not to ride the bus because when I go to my doctor at, that's off of Fletcher Avenue, I have to cross Brisby Downs, and one time I was caught in the middle. And I was very glad that the people on the other side actually let me cross, otherwise I would have gotten mowed down. As you can see, I just, Twixt Street, right here. We need the priorities. These are our priorities identified. If you haven't seen them before, here they are. I didn't come up with this. This came predone through the paper and also through studies that are identified. So my point is this, when you're-
Thank you, sir. Lisa Monteleone, followed by Leslie Maden.
Good evening, board members. I'm Lisa Monteleone. Many of you are friends and neighbors and colleague, former colleagues. I'm here tonight not to represent any organization that I work for. The opinions that I am expressing are my own, but I can tell you from the time that I've left this board and public service, I've been working in the field of workforce development. I'm here to speak to beg for increase in funding for HART and public transportation options. It is a dire circumstance affecting our workforce and our economy. I serve people now who depend on public transportation to get to work. When I help find them jobs, I have to first look and see where they live and where the job is that I'm recommending that they apply for, because a two-hour commute to work is just not feasible. I'm not going to set someone up for success if I expect them to travel two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening to get to work and back. These are young, single parents, male and female. These are disabled veterans. These are people who we are here to try and help be successful. And all we are doing by not funding our public transportation system and giving people more options is setting more obstacles in their path. We really need to help individuals who are from disadvantaged circumstances get on their feet, well, we need to get them to work. And we can't do that without the funding for public transportation. Cuts in service have meant that people who had a maybe hour-long commute to work are now doubling or even maybe tripling that because there's a much longer lead time for them to walk or bike to where they're getting. I have employers' councils meetings once a quarter. At every roundtable meeting I have, our employers express the number-one problem for them is getting employees to work. That's if they get the job, because when they check the box on an application that says, "Do you have reliable transportation?", and they check yes, the following question is, "Do you rely on mass transit or do you have a car?", or words to that effect. If they do not have a car, they're not going to get that interview, because that, in many employers' minds and standards, is not reliable transportation. It is an unfortunate fact. So if they don't even get the opportunity to have a job because they can't afford, like myself and others, a car, insurance, gas, and parking, they're already behind the curve. That puts me to the next thing that I would really wish to advocate for, and was so eloquently spoken by previous speakers, is Vision Zero and the obvious problem we have with people getting killed on our roadways. It's gotten to, it was an unacceptable level when I served with all of you, but it's gotten to be out of hand. It's just continuing to grow. Every single day, someone dies. We need to put a stop to it, and we need to fund our priorities.
Thank you. Leslie Maden, followed by Jamie, I hope, is this Rupsha? Rupsha?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm also a member of the four-year anniversary group, so it's nice to see you all after four years. When I first started coming here, when I first started coming here, my son was four years old, and I was very worried that he wouldn't be able to actually sit with me and, you know, listen to a hearing like this or a meeting like this, but he's here today. He's, he's waiting for me to finish speaking, and he's eight years old now, so he can listen. I hope that you will listen to my pleas today. I wanted to start off by saying that I had a really weird moment on the way to the MPO meeting. I drive down Howard Avenue to get to Kennedy on my way into downtown, and I saw two people trying to cross Howard at Gray Street to get to the JCC. They had a baby carriage. It's a three-lane road. It's a one-way road. People like to barrel down the road so that they can make the light at Kennedy so that they can make the next light, and they're on their way home. And the first thing I thought was, wow, you guys are absolutely absurd. Why are you crossing the street? And then I thought, well, they're going to the community center, right? Like, that's probably where you would want to have a crosswalk, to go to your community center, so you can enjoy some of the amenities that your city has provided for you, or the members, your community have provided for you. So it's absurd. It's absurd to think that they have too much audacity to believe that they could cross a street to get to a community center, and they have to do it at risk to their lives, full stop. Like, there's no, you can cross the street and do it safely. There really isn't any other option for them there. And that is just indicative of pretty much every situation around our urban core, and as we saw in many other places throughout Hillsborough. So we live in a city that prioritizes cars over people, but I would like to remind you that people start businesses, and people buy real estate, and people work, and they innovate, and people vote. So as our four-year anniversary is coming, it's about time for us to vote. And it's happening in November, and it'll happen in 2019. And the thing that we're going to vote for isn't cars, and the people that are running aren't cars either, they are people. So it would be really awesome for you guys to prioritize activities and projects that have to do with people. FDOT understood that. That's why we got a, what was it, $2.7 million trolley gift just in time for today's meeting. So just in time for November and for 2019 voting, these are the things that I would like you to do. As Rick said, please remove any remnants of TBX from the TIP. So we're talking about highway expansion, we're talking about right-of-way purchasing, we're talking about toll lanes. He gave you the line items, and you can research those. Expand HART. I mean, the most vulnerable people in our society need it.
Thank you.
Couple of other things, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am, 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 you need to identify yourself.
My apologies, Leslie Matern.
Jamie Rupsha, Rupsha. Okay, Rupsha, followed by Sam Gibbons.
Good evening, Jamie Rupsha. I am a member of the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee on the MPO, and I'm also a Bay Shore statistic. These comments are presented in my individual capacity. So in December of 2014, I went on a routine run and was hit in a crosswalk by a vehicle going 40 miles an hour at Bay to Bay in Bay Shore, the driver claiming he did not see the steady red light. Statistics will show you that nine out of 10 of those people at that speed will die. I flew 35 feet, and I'm the one that survived to tell my story. You can show the picture now. I've never shown this picture in public. This is me in the hospital. Three months out of work, two years of physical therapy later, I still have issues, but I'm here and I'm advocating for pedestrian safety. That day, my life changed forever, but I won't let fear ruin me. I continue to drive, bike, and run all over the Bay Area from my home in South Tampa to my horse in south of Riverview, friends in Seminole Heights and Lutz. I see every road in this county, and they are all dangerous. And they're dangerous by design. The tip continues to fund moving vehicles as fast as possible. You've all passed resolutions that support Vision Zero, prioritizing safety over moving cars faster, yet lacks implementation due to canceled complete street projects such as Bay to Bay. The road where I live traveled daily, was struck by a vehicle, and many children have to cross each day to get to school. I'm here to tell you, I never thought I would get hit by a car. You or someone you know will be next. Complete street projects are designed to increase safety for all modes of transportation. Bay to Bay is a county road and is already funded under a resurfacing project. Engineering studies show no increase in commute times and a reduction in crashes of 19 to 47 percent. Improve safety for all, vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. Safety should come first. Tampa roads are dangerous by design. I'll repeat it. That's what allows someone to go 102 miles an hour down Bay Shore Boulevard. I probably don't need to remind you that Tampa is the second deadliest city in the country for pedestrian safety, 22 people already losing their lives this year alone. I often wonder how many serious injury statistics, such as myself, go unknown to the masses. Some may not believe all of these enhancements to the roads, such as Bay Shore and Bay to Bay, are related, but outdated and poor road design issues contribute to all of them, as FDOT indicated when they implemented the new design manual this year. Personal responsibility will surely have to play a role within each of us, but these fatalities and accidents continue to increase. The Bay Shore Task Force started in 2004, and we are just now seeing improvements. I don't want the other highlighted problem areas to take 15 years to complete. I implore you to take a hard look at the prioritization of walk-bike projects and complete street projects in the tip, and relook the Bay to Bay design to make roadway design changes consistent with the Vision Zero and Complete Street Projects resolutions you've already passed.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sam Gibbons, followed by Kim Overman.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Sam Gibbons, and I've only gotten to come here for the last two years, so I think a few people are still beating me. I'd like to echo Rick Fernandez's comments about what we need to take out of the tip with regards to the Tampa Bay Express lanes and really interstate improvements in general. We really need to come to an understanding, unlike the mayor of the city of Tampa, who doesn't believe in man-made climate change, and unlike our governor, who doesn't believe in man-made climate change, that it's happening. The term is anthropomorphic ecological degradation, and it's the way, because of the way we act as a species of the burning of fossil fuels, we're causing some troubles, namely sea level rise for the city of Tampa in our region. During high tides in Pinellas County and even in Tampa, streets are flooding. And if we rebuild this interstate the way FDOT would like to do, that we don't want to see, that's probably going to be what we're going to be using to walk around on. Any climate mitigation strategy that we're going to come up with, which the city of Tampa does not have, which I have read that the county commission might have, but I can't find it, we need to recognize that we need to stop burning fossil fuels. And maybe some of y'all might be dead by the time this happens, but I intend to still be alive, and I'll still be fighting it if I need to. I would ask that $6 billion that is allocated, that seems to be allocated from all over TBX there, that we, that this board makes declaration to the state legislature, asking for that money to be re-appropriated to a multimodal system that, for a regional multimodal system that emphasizes local connectivity. Can do that, and that $6 billion would go a long way to doing it, and it would be an absolute waste of money if we put that $6 billion into toll lanes and into express lanes. There is an amazing amount of data that shows that increasing capacity on these express, increasing capacity on the interstate does not solve capacity problems. It only worsens them. There is an incredible amount of data also that shows that Tampa Bay is one of the most dangerous regions in the nation, and a big reason for that is because of the automobile. And 97% of accidents, this comes from the National Highway Safety Administration, 97% of accidents are caused because of human error. So in response to that, we're wanting to put more cars on the road? I, that is, that hurts for me to even say that in front of y'all today, and I know that y'all are more learned than that, and I understand that y'all have decisions to make, but please, can we make this one of them? And that is to at least take Rick Fernandez's positions that we all support, which many of us do support, and remove TBX from out from over our heads, because it is, it's not happening. I'd also like to say that this, through this TBX process, all over the place, it comes up that community identity is something that needs to be maintained for community buy-in, and that's well-respected throughout the region, but in the city of Tampa, FDOT tells us Tampa has to suffer, and no. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Overman, followed by Ray Clark. Ms. Overman will have six minutes, because Margaret Shepherd and Adam, I'm sorry, Adam Metzler, yielding their time, so you have nine minutes.
Great, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, it's nine minutes, not six, nine.
Nine works, too.
It's nine.
Good evening. Thank you very much for holding this hearing and helping the citizens to give you some feedback on what we believe is important to our community. June 12th, June 12th, 17 years ago, my son had to be two different places in town. And he was required to be there as part of a mistake he made that he needed to make right. If he didn't show up in those two places at the time he needed to, his probation officer basically said he was going to go to jail. So we called HART because he didn't have a car. And HART said it wasn't possible for him to get there. And his probation officer said, "Too bad." That's what happens to people who don't have cars. And two weeks later, after I co-signed to help him buy a car, someone ran him off the road at 275 and the Hillsborough Avenue Bridge at a high rate of speed, and he has a permanent brain injury for the rest of his life. So when I stand in front of you and speak to you about my desire to see that we invest in our infrastructure in such a way that we take care of the citizens of Hillsborough County, I take it personally, because when we lose and don't provide for our citizens, we are betraying the public trust. We have a very nice budget with the tip and taking care of our priorities. And I want to thank you for keeping the Hights Mobility Project alive and funded. And I want to thank you for keeping the Hights Mobility Project alive and funded. It is going to help the many people that live in the middle of the city with a safer alternative and ways to get around. We had about 12 people of the community to get together today to talk about the people in our community that are at risk of being run over by speeders through the community and the lack of safe intersections in our community. So people are still working to communicate to the powers-to-be and to work together to find solutions so that we can allow our citizens in our community to be safe. But when we only spend 11.87 percent of our TIP money on transit, you cannot tell me that anyone on this board has made transit a priority. The numbers don't lie. If you look at the budget, that's what it says. And I think it's important for us to realize that the money we are spending is about bus replacement and about fare systems and maintenance of the facilities and not expansion of services to our citizens that need employment, our citizens that need fairness, and our citizens that need to be able to take care of themselves and their families. Without a transit system, there are a very large number of people in Hillsborough County that are not fully employed. If you do not have a car in Hillsborough County, you are not fully employed. I challenge any one of you to go for three weeks without a car and see how many of these meetings you can make. Very few. And you live in one of the most densely served areas in the county with transit service. So I strongly ask you to be real about the funding decisions you're making. The TIP has a lot of good projects in it, and I've been happy with some of the things that I've seen. And there's a lot of good work that's being done by the Planning Commission and with FDOT in creating opportunities for us to grow. But when we want to really focus on what's important to our citizens, we need to make sure we communicate that transit is a priority. Your citizens have, in this chart, which are the responses to one of the dozens of surveys you've asked your citizens to tell you what is important to you. It shows there is a 70 percent response indicating that the first thing we needed to focus on for our future is first commuter and light rail line. I don't see that in this TIP. I don't see it. Now, we've talked about CSX, but there is no excuse for it taking 10 years to negotiate with CSX. It's not that hard. Trust me, when you want to get something done, you get it done. I have confidence there are people in this community that believe that it's possible. But I strongly encourage you to realize that money matters. You know, we're now dealing with the grief of many of our citizens that have been hit by and killed by cars. And Bay Shore is a very harsh reminder of all of us, because it's such a tough situation to recognize. I listen every evening, because my building and home faces 275, to the motorcycles that race up and down 275 between 2:00 and 4:00, pretty much every night. We do have a racing problem in Hillsborough County. Asked the family members of the two seniors that were in their car as two trucks came zooming off of 275 at Sly and killed both of our seniors in their cars, racing on Sly Avenue. We have a speed problem in our community. It's macho, it's awesome. We sell beefed-up macho cars. But we don't allow our citizens to be safe by investing in ways that they can drive around safe. Vision Zero needs to be more than lip service. We need to have a campaign, as we are with Vision Zero, in teaching people how to use The funding to take care of transit, as well as the safety of our roads, needs to be elevated to a level that we are sincere. It is critically important that we do so. It's past time. This is the fourth year I've been up here saying something similar to this. But like I said, I take what happened in my family seriously and personally. This government failed my family when they gave my son no other choice to drive a car, when I knew he wasn't a very good driver. And he had to be somewhere to make good on his promise for fixing a mistake he made. And we will suffer that for the rest of our family life. And trust me, I will never let you forget it. It's time for us to invest in transit so that we help our citizens take care of their families, so that our seniors don't have to drive so long that they're a danger to themselves and others on the road because they have no alternative, and all those individuals that would prefer to not to have to drive. In the middle of the town, we are starting to build land use and follow the land use laws of smart development by building density. And the community in the middle of the town is screaming because all of a sudden, there's gonna be 85 people living in the building next door and there's nowhere for them to park. You know, our business interests, I actually, my position on the MPO, CAC for the MPO, which I'm not speaking on behalf of at the moment, was as a representative of the businesses in this area. Our businesses are innovating. Our government is not. And we need to step up the pace of investing in more buses and more bus lines on a grid and not necessarily a regional project that doesn't help a lot of people get around. It's important for us to build that grid, because that's how people get around. Expressways are nice, but they don't serve the majority. And that's what's most important, when you decide to spend not only the county dollars, but direct or request state and federal dollars on our behalf. Thank you very much.
Ray Clark, followed by Rochelle Rebek. And those who have your phones, please put them on, vibrate, or turn them off. It's nice to hear ESPN give you a message, but please turn them off. Mr. Clark.
Hi. Well, I'm gonna make two statements first, that you guys didn't need my motivational speech, that's for damn sure. Because you're telling these people, they better watch it, because you're gonna vote them out of office. Woo! And two, that Russian lady that spoke first, she was worried about what she was gonna say, but I think she kicked it in the ass, because she came up with the plan to take the money out of her pocket, excuse my language.
Yeah.
I'll take care of that. To take the money out of her pocket to buy the paint, to paint the crosswalks. Now, that's saying something. She said you need a Russian woman to get things done, and she was right. Now I'm gonna talk. I look at the world logically. I have started eight businesses from scratch. I am gonna buy Tropicana Field and generate $20 million a week with superstar charity concerts. I think that's saying something. But I hope you guys are really paying attention, but I don't think this guy over here, Joseph Wagner, is, because he hasn't looked up once. So I'm a person who...
Hold up. Excuse me. Sir, if you're gonna address the body, don't address or attack any of the members up here.
Yes, sir, I apologize. So anyway, I look at the world through logical eyes, okay? And you, I saw that lady with the report who said you have $1,554,522,907 for FDO Work Program. That's a hell of a lot of money. I'd like to know how much money you have to help the homeless, to help the people, the veterans, to help the unemployed mothers, the single mothers, okay? Before you go spend that much money on transportation. I understand it's a difficult situation, you're between a rock and a hard place, but guess what? People come first, just like the other people, one of the other people said, you know, people come first. Now, as far as your toll-by-play program, I think it borders on criminal. Because A, you have no educational program about Sunpass. Two, you don't have enough signs to indicate that there is a toll. You've taken away the toll booths, which indicate that there are no reasons why you shouldn't keep on driving. And then you get a ticket in the piece of paper in the mail that says, "You now have to pay the fine plus an administration fee," which I think is really not fair. Now, I know you guys don't like me telling you all this, because you think I'm a butt-head from New Jersey who's outspoken, but you gotta examine the facts. I'm gonna generate $20 million for charity a week, and that's only from Tropicana Field. I give a, I give a damn, okay? I have been blessed all my life, and I choose to give back by my eighth business. So before you go passing those bills for the approval of transportation programs, I think you better take a real good look in the mirror. Thank you very much.
Rochelle Rebek, followed by Chris Villa.
Thank you. Board members, citizens watching at home, all the ships at sea. My name is Rochelle Rebek. I live in South Tampa, about a mile and a half from this building, and I had to drive my car here to speak with you tonight. I had to drive or Uber, because as we all know, we have no efficient, reliable public transit in Tampa. I couldn't ride my bike, because we do not have enough safe bicycle infrastructure in Tampa. And I couldn't walk, because it was raining, as it does most days in the summer in Tampa. The city desperately needs the support of this board to put our county transportation resources where they are most needed first. And that is in public transportation in the urban core, in creating a transit spine within the county, and in creating safe streets. We simply have to get more cars off the road in our county first. And that means starting our transit development priorities with the CSX tracks from USF to downtown, adding more express bus service from downtown to the airport, more ferries from South County to MacDill and across the Bay to St. Pete, and developing arterial bus spurs from the CSX tracks with true bus rapid transit at street level that will promote economic development, increase our tax base, and get our county citizens where they need to go without their cars. If all of that isn't prioritized in the current plan, then the current plan needs to change. Currently, regional bus rapid transit running down the interstate seems to be the preferred priority in the TIP, over the CSX tracks, over the 275 to a Boulevard, and over all else. This nominal bus rapid transit plan, as proposed, does nothing to address these core Hillsborough County needs. This fake BRT plan is not better than nothing. It is a diversion of resources and time to benefit Pasco County commuters without any clear benefit to the citizens of Hillsborough County. I submit it's your responsibility to put Hillsborough County's needs first. I hope you will. If not, we'll remember in November and in April. Thank you.
Chris Villa, followed by Connie Giebait. And Mr. Villa will have 12 minutes, because Robert Marley, English Smith, and Jordan Miller yield their time.
Okay, thanks for your patience on that. You guys know who I am. This all started with one voice.
You have to really...
Okay. Christopher Bella.
There you go.
Yeah, Tampa, Florida, Ybor City. This all started with one voice, a single conversation in 2015. I caught wind of the interstate expansion. My worst fears from years prior were solidified before me. I saw a map of the new downtown interchange. It was larger, consuming more homes and streets of our historic Ybor City. I needed to have a conversation with others to stop this ridiculous interstate expansion. And a prompt to meeting soon occurred at a local coffee shop in Ybor. I felt I made the right call on this informal gathering back in 2015. This was our true reset. FDOT should not take credit for the time we have now to stop this interstate expansion while shifting to other, much-needed priorities. Equity is missing from our transportation plans. This means it leads to poor mobility choices, more crashes, less freedom on street and land use, and environmental injustices. Before I proceed forward with my slide presentation on current problems and recommendations, I request the MPO to strike out the word "modernization" from the downtown interchange and the TIP. As a relic of de jure segregation by planning, the interchange should not be expanded. We ought to study for its removal. I'm gonna begin with a series of slides here, just to make my point of why we need equity in our transportation. The first slide, if you can see on the screen, is photos of the downtown interchange. To the left is from 1967, to the right is 2017. This is another view of the interchange itself. Over 4,000 properties have been removed because of the interchange and Interstate 4. Properties include homes, businesses, civic spaces, churches, whole cities like Robert City and also Gary and East Ybor. Note that over the past 50 years, if you see the development on the black and white photo along the interstate, has virtually vanished and become vacant spaces that now FDOT owns and for some odd reason doesn't want to let go, despite there isn't really a true plan or they don't know what they're doing. On Slide 3, I'm gonna zoom in to where I live, so you can see why I come here almost every month and complain. I'm not really complaining, I guess I'm just trying to bring some truth to y'all and help you understand where I'm coming from, because this is very painful every time I look at it. If you notice the numbers there, eight block streets because of the downtown interchange and Interstate 4. It's very difficult to find any other neighborhood in the Tampa proper that is in this condition, that is a landmark neighborhood that has been established almost nearly 70 years before the interstate even took foot. My neighborhood has been disproportionately burdened in contrast to other neighborhoods and to regional sprawl. Again, modernization of the downtown interchange must be removed, since any expansion would cause further impact leading to a deeper level of environmental injustice. I deal with noise, blight, just pollution. It has to end. I am being judged unfair in this process. On the next slide, we're gonna go and talk about road safety here. What you see is a slideshow of 2018, what we have so far. The total crashes up to yesterday is 12,620 on cars. Now, we have a total of pedestrian crashes at 281. We have pedestrian fatalities at 23, so 23 people died already this year. This is the next slide. This is from 2017. Just to kind of show you that we're on track, unfortunately, to these numbers. We had a total crash of 27,903, and then we have pedestrian crashes at 634. We're over 500. And we had 51 pedestrian fatalities. Now, my data is from the state, so I did not pull these numbers directly from a media source or whatnot. They're actually from the Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles. Our TMA is by law to, are able to design what's called a Transportation Demand Management Plan. TMDs can occur anywhere in urban Tampa. I think if we prioritize that, because it will cause other modes, pedestrian access and whatnot, we will see a reduction of pedestrian fatalities and also crashes. This next slide is actually from a Brookings Institution map. What you're looking at with all these dots are basically pluses or minuses of distances between jobs. For Florida, like the Tampa Bay area, we have a big red dot, actually. We actually have a 20 percent increase between jobs and homes in the Tampa Bay area. This is from National Statistic. If I go into the fairness of all this, you will see that Black, Hispanic, Asian, poor populations suffer double digits, more so than the white and more affluent communities. We don't have any type of reduction in distance between jobs and homes. Only compact development can help with that, and having transportation choices to get to places. So for my next slide here, I'm actually presenting a, I'm sorry, here, I'm lost in my track, a projection map showing the differences between compact development, non-compact, and also low-effective transit versus high-use of transit. This study was actually funded by the Department of Transportation. It was completed by the University of South Florida. It does include the MPO 2040 data, so that's why it's relevant to this conversation. It's indicating like the amount of air pollution that you may have based on the type of development you would use and also the type of transportation. As I go into the next slide, what we're looking at shows... As I go into the next slide, what we're looking at shows basically non-compact development. Nitrogen oxide, which is one of the most polluted elements you can have in the air that creates smog and also hurts air quality, is caused by vehicles. So, what you're looking at is basically a map with no compact development, very little transit. Everything in the pink is nitrogen oxide that pretty much covers the whole entire county area. If we go and actually utilize compact development, again, bringing people closer to jobs, having more modes, people can walk places, we notice we're in the blue. That means we're seeing less of this harmful chemical. What's important to note with this compact development, if you look at the red bar, that's actually the decreased amount of travel distance, so it's going into negatives because we're a little bit closer to where we need to go to. The travel time actually decreases down quite a bit, the green bar, because, again, we're closer to where we need to get to, and we have different ways to get to. Time is money, and so we're saving that. We now have another options to getting people to places, and we're saving that time and money. We notice that the blue, which is barely virtually existent on the right side, is the trips. The trips are nonexistent. Again, this study is funded by the Department of Transportation with USF by engineers using the NPO data. So, my whole point is, is that we do see a little bit of nitrogen oxide present in all these plans. However, the transit that's identified in all these studies, actually, the reason why we do have a little bit of nitrogen oxide is because it's designed for regional and express buses only, which shows that they would not improve travel times. We can actually... The study recommends to look into heavy or light rail transit. So, I'm bringing this up because we're kind of in an important fulcrum here, where we're gonna be looking at other stuff in the LRTP, and I think we have a really great opportunity to utilize light rail, CSX, and so forth, to have more equity into where we need to go with transportation. One other point that I wanna say about the study itself, too, is that FDOT has admitted, well, as part of the research, too, that the express lanes next to people like me along the interchange and also by the highway, they don't know if there's... What type of impacts we're gonna endure. There's no evidence to say that if there would be express lanes, that that would reduce the amount of blight or air quality in my neighborhood. So, why are they spending so much money to move traffic, but we're gonna have worse results? They're gonna take away more properties in my neighborhood, and they're gonna put me into a situation where I'm suffering, my health is suffering much more. So, with that said, I think what we just need to do is with the Regional Transit Feasibility Plan, we need to focus on having different modes. It can't be an express-bus-only plan. I've given you the data here. You can take it as you will, and I will be pushing it. We just need to have choices. Now, many current projects in the TIP I do like. I think it's on the path of equity. My Ybor community and I support the streetcar extension, Vision Zero corridors, the preservation and State of Heart, and complete streets, because they help create a freedom of choice to get to places. The quest of equity isn't about banning cars. It's about putting people first, reversing impacts while making social and economic gains for our neighborhoods. Removing barriers like the downtown interchange is a good start. At minimum, right now, we cannot prioritize interstate widening over the state of transit and our safety. Right now, we're, what, like, the second from the bottom on transit? We need to focus on that and to connect people better. So, everybody behind me, I'm so glad y'all are here. You've been with me for a number of years. I just wanna say thank you, but everybody here gave this commission an opportunity, a reset. It wasn't FDOT. FDOT didn't do this. It was people investing 50, 60 hours of their time a week, trying, with jobs and everything, trying to make this happen, trying to drive people over to you. I've been an extension for that. I tried to encourage people to come to you guys to talk about transportation. We don't want to fight against you. We wanna work with you, but you have to give us something. And I think today, like Rick Fernandez and other people have said, it starts by removing the barriers. It starts by striking out the interchange expansion. We just can't have that anymore. So, with that said, we are your experts, but we also can be your champions to make this county even better and reconnect our city. So, please, 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 move away from highway expansion. We don't need a conditional capacity on the interstate. There's other ways to deal with this transportation crisis that we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Connie Giaubate, followed by Amanda Brown.
Connie Giaubate. I'm here representing the Davis Island residents who put their input. There was a communication that was sent out to all residents in Davis Island. Here is the consolidation of the communication received from Davis Island residents. I've also been in communication with our transportation chair from our association, who has been working over 10 years to try to get things done in an efficient, effective manner, as well as a steward for the neighborhood planning organization or committee, and I was around when that started, which was 22, 23 years ago. They have also been working a long time to try to get something done on Davis Island. I'm also part of the new coalition that is starting, that is not only neighborhood associations, but many organizations, and the, you know, the whole purpose is to get enough voices heard. These individuals from Davis Island, some of them have lived on the island for a long, long time, and they have seen that their streets have become unsafe through the years. We have new people. I have responses from moms, young moms, who are petrified to take their children in the stroller on the street. Why? Mostly because drivers decide to turn their vehicles into deadly weapons. Now, I doubt that we're gonna see many protests to ban those deadly weapons. I don't think that's realistic, but there is a lot to do with remembering safety first. Now, what is on the screen... Wanna show that? Okay. Here's our island. The X's in circles have been identified as all of the dangerous crosswalks. We have a lighted crosswalk. The problem is vehicle speed through there. They ignore it. I, myself, have had some very close calls on those crosswalks. The yellow lights perhaps should be turned to red, and maybe a sign that says "must stop" for pedestrians, instead of just a picture where the driver sees yellow and says, "Okay, maybe I can go, or maybe I can't go." So, I think we need to look at communication issues on the signage. The stop signs are an issue, all of those towards the middle of the island and down. They're being constantly run by vehicles. The vehicles are speeding. They come up on a stop sign. They don't see it. So, I actually asked drivers about this, and they said, "We can't see those stop signs. They're too small." So, can we make the stop signs big?
Thank you, ma'am.
And, of course, the speeding. We have a Daytona 500 going on. So, thank you very much.
Amanda Brown, followed by Doug Jessup.
Hello, I'm Amanda Brown. I think this is the first year that I've heard all of the speakers aligning along some of the same issues, so the previous speakers have already spoken so eloquently on issues of safety, specifically Bay Shore and other deadly streets in our area, and TBX, and I sincerely share their desires. I'm here today to ask for the following changes in our transportation funding priorities. We, as a county, seem to be reluctantly inching towards progress, but today we need to start proactively sprinting towards our goals, and I think we have the opportunity to do that today. One, we need to stop the fake BRT proposal, stop putting our priorities on expanding the interstate and the bridge, especially when there's no dedicated or separated lanes for transit. As you've heard, putting buses on shoulders or in express toll lanes is unacceptable. It's not true rapid transit. We'll just be stuck in the same situation we always have. Two, there is a lack of actual transit projects for funding in this tip. The tip notes maintaining the system, but we should be looking towards expanding that system. Many have said that here. We should be funding projects like the Cross Bay Ferry, which I think we punted over to St. Pete, which is unacceptable. We need to look at CSX and bringing back our lost routes that we lost through Mission Max. Number three, we need to stop what I call the "study industrial complex." We seem to be studying everything to death. Our catalyst projects have been studied for years. One specific project that nobody's mentioned that I wanna bring up is that there seems to be a $500,000 study to replace two of our historic bridges in the city of Tampa, Platte Street and Columbus Avenue. As I recall, we just repaired those bridges not too long ago, so I'm not sure why we'd waste our money on that, when we could put that money towards projects that need to be underway immediately. This body is stood idly by while Bay Shore, Florida and Tampa, Bush, Fowler Avenue, and other roads remain deadly corridors. We needed pedestrian bicycle safety improvements like yesterday. Without these improvements, you're gonna see Mr. Gwynn's bi-weekly fatality reports continue. They're not gonna show any sign of going away. We need action today to make our streets safer, to increase transit, and make these projects work for us. You are here to serve us, and I hope you will listen to myself and the people in this room. Thank you.
Doug Jessup, followed by Annie Hipson.
Douglas Jessup. According to FDOT's numbers, the traffic delay on I-275 amounts to 40 hours per driver per year. If we assume that a typical driver uses I-275 300 days a year, this amounts to eight minutes per day per driver. And for those who commute daily, the delay comes to no more than four minutes per trip. Average delays tell only part of the story, however. We know that roughly 2/3 of the traffic on I-275 is local, which is to say that the great majority of commuters face delays that are bound to be less than four minutes per trip. In the aggregate, then, any serious benefit that might derive from interstate expansion goes to a small minority of drivers who desire to live in remote suburban developments and commute to workplaces far from their homes. From a statistical point of view, Hillsborough County does not have a transportation problem. What it has is a sprawl problem. Local authorities have spent decades facilitating sprawl, and developers have sold much of the public on the idea that it is possible to have a large house in a remote gated community while making a swift daily commute at speeds averaging 65 miles an hour. Those who buy into the developer's myth awaken to find that a significant portion of their lives must be spent sitting in traffic. So, the question becomes, what, if anything, should be done for the aggrieved suburbanites who regret their lifestyle choices? One answer would be to construct a functioning mass transit system. Commuter rail systems can and do whisk along at speeds above 65 miles an hour, and they move large numbers of people. The current tip suggests funding a bus rapid transit system as part of the Tampa Bay Next scheme. Alas, that proposal amounts to nothing more than putting buses on the interstate. If you don't like the current state of traffic conditions on I-275, you won't like them any better if you toss a few buses into the mix. Real BRT has a dedicated bus-only right-of-way and platform-level stations, among other things, but the BRT on offer has none of that. And worse, the whole BRT concept is tied to an interstate expansion scheme with the idea that offering a fake transit system can breathe some life into the despised and discredited TBX concept, which regrettably lives on in the current TIP. Now, as I noticed earlier, the great majority of traffic in the interstates is local, so now we are often told that the time has come to "think regionally." But in practice, that slogan means "promote sprawl." The Hillsborough NPO should be concerned about people in Hillsborough County and not worry about how to make life easier for people who live in Wesley Chapel and commute to St. Pete. Funding for transit, rather than the phony BRT on offer, should be your priority. Acquiring the CSX tracks and building local rail transit would also be a very good start. And what do we say to the aggrieved suburbanite? Well, how about sell the house, sell the two cars, sell the riding lawn mower, buy yourself a condo near where you work, and have a lot more fun. Thank you.
Annie Hipson, followed by Bill Roberts.
My name is Annie Hipson, and I live... Excuse me. I live in West Tampa. I used to live in Seminole Heights. Before that, I lived in West Tampa. Before that, I lived in South Seminole Heights, and then before that, I lived in West Tampa. You know, I've lived all around, but I've never lived north of Hannah. I'm a city girl. It seems to me that when we talk about mass transit, what we concentrate on are bringing people in from the far-flung suburbs. You know, we talk about bringing people in from Wesley Chapel, which, incidentally, is in another county, people from New Tampa, from Bloomingdale, from Fish Hawk Ranch, from Riverview. We talk about bringing those people in downtown. Well, I'm gonna tell you, they're not gonna take the bus. They're not gonna take transit. You know why? Because they feel, first of all, that only poor people take transit, and for some reason, they believe that poverty must be catching because they don't want to sit next to them on a bus. But the second thing is, they waited out before they bought in Tampa Palms or Bloomingdale. They thought, "Big, new house where everything works, and our commuting to work." Okay, big, new house it is. Well, let me point out that we have a lot of people who didn't make that trade. What we decided was small, older house where sometimes nothing works, and we don't want to be tied to our cars. Where I live now, I go to the Strazza lot. I get there in seven minutes. I don't want to be in the car all the time. I want to be in my life all the time. So, I'm the person, and my neighbors, we are the people you should be aiming mass transit at, because we will take the bus. We're not all poor people, either. My sister works for Circuit Court downtown. She lives on Fern and Florida Avenue in Seminole Heights. For 30 years, she's been taking the bus to work because it is so much cheaper than paying for parking. She's not poor. I take the bus when I can. So, find a way to get a bus service that helps us, and then they will get jealous. And they will want a bus service for themselves, when we show that transit will work for ordinary people and not just for poor people. I'm not trying to down poor people. I've been a poor person who took the bus, but...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill Roberts, followed by Wanda Janizowski. Bill Roberts? Going once, going twice, gone. Janet... Wanda Janizowski, and if I mess it up, blame it on my public school education.
I'm Wanda Janizowski. I'm speaking for the first time publicly in my life, because I am a natural introvert. That's how I was born, but I'm speaking today on behalf of all our accident victims who have perished in all these traffic accidents, needlessly, unnecessarily, without any reason, no rhyme or reason to it. Ever since the senseless accident where Lilia and Jessica Robinault lost their lives, I have been grieving with the family. Our whole community has been grieving, and we want action. We lost another pedestrian in 2004, which resulted in a traffic study. It took the city 15 years to act on one of the recommendations of that traffic study, and that was to reduce the speed limit from 40 to 35. It took 15 years for the city to take action only after two more innocent pedestrians lost their lives. I ask the county and the city to revisit that old study and have it updated, and I would like to see timely action this time from city officials. The reduced speed limit is not enough to stop reckless drivers from drag racing on Bay Shore or any other long uninterrupted stretch of the road in Tampa. The only solution for that is more traffic lights, unfortunately, especially in areas where pedestrian traffic is frequent and regular. where pedestrian traffic is frequent and regular. We also need more enforcement of speed limits with not only police patrol, but speed cameras located throughout the city. I believe speed cameras, over the long term, will pay for themselves. I will even start a campaign and get the funding for one speed camera on Bay Shore, and I know that'll pay for the second and the third and the fourth. Thank you.
Kathy Yates, followed by Leslie Forster.
I am the Secretary for the Palmasia Neighborhood Association, and I am also a member of a large local moms group, the Moms of South Tampa. Last week, on June 4th, local Tampa Neighborhood Association President attended a meeting to discuss the challenges in our neighborhoods and what we are facing regarding the safety of our residents. The shared issues that we're facing collectively are lack of sidewalks, there's a lack of concern for the safety of our children trying to get to and from schools, and they're speeding throughout our neighborhoods. What we are asking for is for more funds to be allocated towards keeping pedestrians and bicyclists safe. We feel that our neighborhood is shifting towards a demographic of younger families with small children that want to bike or walk to schools, local restaurants and shops. We have a right to be safe on our streets. We have very few sidewalks, and the sidewalks that we do have in our neighborhoods are sporadic. They start and stop. So they may be in front of two homes, and they may not be in front of any other homes on that street. When we petition the city to add or to complete our sidewalks, we are told that there are no funds in the budget for these sidewalks. We have children and parents walking to schools, for example, my elementary school, Roosevelt Elementary School, who have to do so in the street when there are traffic in both directions. This is because there are no sidewalks. It feels that we are waiting for a tragedy to occur to add sidewalks instead of being proactive and avoiding that tragedy. We also need to focus on the traffic, traffic calming measures. People feel that they can speed on our streets, and they do because there is nothing stopping them. There are very rare stops, rare lighted crosswalks, and the pedestrian is placed last in this city. Our neighborhood park, for example, Corona Park, is located on the corner of Sterling and Corona, and this is in need of a four-way stop. Cars speed down Sterling to avoid Dale Maybreen to get to Britton Plaza. In 2016, a car leaving the park hit a middle school student. In April this year, a crash occurred at this location, and one of the vehicles ended up in a lawn across the street from the park. What would have happened if it ended up in the park? Would we then have a four-way stop? What if the middle school student was hit? Would we then have a four-way stop? Why are we waiting for tragedy to occur to make safety changes? We have a right to be safe in our street. We have a right to walk to school without fear of being hit by a car. We need sidewalks. We need to make sure we are proactively protecting our residents and children and not continuing to just react to preventable tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Forster, followed by Breonna Fox.
My name is Leslie Forster, and I am a business owner in South Shore. Hi, I'm one of the aggrieved suburbanites who regret my choices. But not my choice of where I work. I work less than five miles away from my home, which I have no riding lawnmower. One of the reasons that I chose to buy a house down on Big Bend Road prior to the housing crisis was that there was going to be a large mall, and Waterset Community was going to, along with that mall, take care of a number of transit issues that they saw forthcoming. In 2011, the Florida State House Bill 7207 said that developers are no longer responsible for the cost of reducing or eliminating existing traffic deficiencies. So, in November and December, meetings of the Board of County Commissioners, Waterset asked to be relieved of a number of their responsibilities and go from $83 million of improvement down to $11 million. $72 million were existing deficiencies. They were existing then, they're still existing now. I'm really glad to see that Big Bend Road is on the list of things that are due to be improved, but only $17.3 million is earmarked in that. And if we let a large developer out of $72 million worth of existing deficiencies, we could probably kick a little bit more money there. Even though I work only five miles from where I live, it can often take me over 30 minutes to get there because to go the two miles and get on the highway can take up to 30 minutes. Today, in the afternoon, it was 1:30 in the afternoon, not a high-traffic time, I pulled out of my community, and then I was stopped at the light in front of East Bay High School. I was stopped at the light on one side of I-75, and then the light on the other side of I-75, and then the light on Simmons Loop, and the light on Lincoln, and then the light on 301. That is every single light. One of the things that Waterset promised to do was, instead of expanding Big Bend Road from four to six lanes, they were going to just do a traffic light improvement. I don't think they did it. Thank you very much for your time. I am a board member of the Greater Riverview Chamber of Commerce. I'm in the Mosaic Community Advisory Panel. I am involved in the community, but that's not why I'm speaking today. I'm speaking as a private citizen, but the aggrieved suburbanites, we're doing everything we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Breonna Fox. Breonna Fox. Okay. Mike Burlick. Mike Burlick. Megan Hemmick. Megan Hemmick, followed by Kevin Thurman.
Hi, I'm Megan Hemmick. I actually just moved here last summer from Colorado, and I've actually never been involved in any sort of political anything, but that means that this is really something that's near and dear to my heart, and that's pedestrian safety. And I feel like so many people tonight have been here so long and have had so much more knowledge on all of this than I do. So really, here tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of my family and behalf of other moms in the community who I've heard expressed their same concerns regarding pedestrian safety. We moved here as a one-car family from Colorado. Our second car, if you will, is a cargo bike, where both my boys ride on the back. We were so excited that we were going to be able to live in the Sunshine State and take advantage of our bike year-round. Imagine our surprise when we moved here and realized that our second car was definitely not going to be used at all. And so as a result, my husband started biking to work, and that's the longest 20 minutes of my day every morning while I wait for him to text me that he arrived to work safely. And then another equally 20 minutes, incredibly long, nail-biting, at the end of the day, waiting for him to come home. I know his route by heart. In the event something had happened, I know where to go to find him. That is not how we should have to live to be bicyclists and pedestrians in a community. We've lived a lot of places. We're active duty. We move around. This is by far the most unsafe place we've ever lived. And it's -- I know you guys know that. We're the second-most dangerous city for pedestrians, deaths per capita. Last fall, we were teaching my four-year-old to ride his pedal bike, and we had to teach him in the street because our neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks, as Kathy was just talking about. It's mind-blowing. So, we decided, why not take him over to Bay Shore? It's the longest sidewalk, right? So, we decided to go over there. To get there, we have to cross Bay to Bay and McDill. He fell off his bike. We got -- people were honking and yelling at a four-year-old who fell off his bike. Then, we have to dart in front of traffic that's turning left onto the expressway. We finally get over to Bay to Bay and Bay Shore, and we have to wait through, thankfully, lit crosswalks. However, because we have children, we can't make it all the way across Bay Shore in one light. So we have to wait on the median, completely exposed, to get all the way across the street. Then we get to Bay Shore, which should be safe, right? Except for, then we're on Bay Shore, and we're afraid to be there because we've seen so many cars go into the green space or up onto the sidewalk, or crashes just happen a couple of feet away from us. So now, I'm forced to helicopter parent my child when I don't think that's something we should have to do. I think a lot of people before me have stated priorities that I wholeheartedly agree with, and I'm just here to help you understand personal anecdotes for why this is something that we want, consistent with the Vision Zero and Complete Streets resolutions that have already been passed. Thank you.
Topher Morrison. Followed by Lena Young Green.
I don't need it that hard. My name is Topher Morrison. I live downtown. I'm a small business owner and a candidate for the mayor of Tampa. You know, transportation solutions in Tampa seem to be like a bad scene for Groundhog Day. However, I do feel that under the leadership of Beth Alden, that this MPO, with the exception of TB Next, and while far from perfect, is starting to move in the right direction. And I realize that's a lot of disclaimers, but I'm trying to remain positive. For example, adopting Vision Zero is a great thing. Thank you for that. I only urge that as you look to adopt this plan, that you be sensitive to the community's needs, not your own, especially in regards to walkability and active transportation like bikes and public transit. I would like to go on record, say that I am not in favor of adding any new roads or widening any current roads. It costs taxpayers too much money, and it doesn't solve the problem. And the reason for this is quite simple, and it's been proven. As carefully outlined in the books Walkable City and Street Smart by Jeff Speck -- sorry, Walkable City and Street Smart by Jeff Speck and Sam Schwartz, induced demand is the phenomenon that happens when you increase the capacity for a problem, you don't decrease the problem. You only increase the ability to have a bigger problem. In other words, more lanes don't reduce traffic, they just create an opportunity for more traffic. You all know this, but why do you ignore this and keep pushing bigger roads on us? Because as the old adage goes, "It's difficult to get someone to understand something when their salary and their special interests depend on them not understanding it." It's time to put the power of decision of those whose paycheck is not tied to their lack of understanding. No greater example of induced demand locally would be the extensive widening of I-275, which promised increased traffic flow, but as we know now, it just created more cars traveling at the same congested slow speed. And I doubt anyone on this panel wants to have their legacy be known for just creating more traffic problems like I-275. I feel a solution to this would be to take the funds allocated for road expansion and apply it to the area of walkability and advanced public transit solutions. Reduced demand is the phenomena that happens when you reduce the capacity for a problem. It does the exact opposite of induced demand. It actually reduces the problem. If you take time to research this, you'll find cities all over the country that give their roads a diet. They remove lanes and even get rid of freeways like the Embarcadero in California, and the cars move just as easily and in many cases, more efficiently. Please consider Josh Frank's proposal. Much of the proposals this year seem striking similar to the ones past years before, but why don't we think with more political courage and explore what some might think are even crazy ideas? It costs upwards of $10 million per mile conservatively for roads, takes years to build, and annoys drivers under development.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lena Young Green, followed by Dana Lazarus. And Ms. Green has six minutes because Kareem Young yielded her time.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for allowing us to come once again to talk with you, as we've done repeatedly in the last several years. One of the things that we've shared that, now that we've learned as much as we've learned over these years, is that this work is not just an occasional activity, it's become our lifestyle. So as we continue with working on improving our communities, we plan to be around for many more years to come. One of the things that I often speak to you about is that the way transportation was planned 30, even 60 years ago, addressed the generation, my generation, us who, at that time, thought that utopia was moving out into the suburbs. I'm sorry, not attacking suburbians. But for us, we were sold on the big cars and how do we get to our white picket fences and our big houses all the way back then. 30 years ago, DOT, as its plan goes, and a 30-year planning process, is that they were planning for the goals of my generation 30 years prior. And 30 years later, we're here talking about plans that were made for my generation that now is going to be applied to the new generation that does not have those goals in mind. We could see that by the increase and the successes of the Uber and the Lyft, how many young people are now moving into my neighborhood. 30 years ago, we were mostly poor minority. Today, a half a block from the interstate in my neighborhood, a house sold for over $500,000 that I could have purchased four, five years ago for about $30,000. That's what's happening today. Young people today are not looking to run away. They are looking to work, play, entertain, and live where they -- and live in the same area. The plans that we are talking about moving people is not focused on our urban core. It's not focused on areas that people who desire to live in those areas are focused on. So my request for you today, again, is that we continue to talk about how do we have equitable transportation. The people who lived in my neighborhood 30 years ago have generally been impacted by gentrification. We've been working for a long time to try to make a balance in our community. Well, balance today is so effective, or worked from back then is so effective, that we are displacing many of our poor urban minorities who are being moved further out into the country where services are not as available. They don't have cars, cannot afford cars, insurance, and going to areas where they can't get to work easily. We need to continue the direction we're going, encourage walkability, biking, means of getting around without having a car, encouraging economic development. It's been shown that interstates do not generate as much economic benefit to an area as do boulevards reconnecting of neighborhoods and rejoining the social fabric that we've had in the past. My request to you is that we focus again more directly on our safe streets, traffic calming. We don't need to be sure that the car gets from one end of the street to the other as quickly as possible. That's not improving our quality of life. Please continue to look at our boulevard concept, continue to support Vision Zero. We think that's an awesome other opportunity. In the tip, we have asked for the Green artery, which connects 20 neighborhoods, which 22 miles within our urban core, and all of the others that support this approach. Thank you again.
Followed by Karen Mikowski.
Christopher Gleason, Chair of Transportation Committee for Tampa Bay CR Club. I urge you to prioritize increased transit, improve transit, safer streets and smarter planning for the next five years of the Traffic Station Improvement Program. and smarter planning for the next five years of the Transportation Improvement Program. As this annual meeting includes projects from a long-range transportation plan, we considered, for most importance, we urge you to look into the future, make decisions that are long-term solutions for our county. The regional transit feasibility plan needs to be a true mass transit solution, not express bus on elevated lanes being called bus rapid transit. Furthermore, the vast amount of the proposed budget goes to building bus stations and not the actual transit portions of the project. We hope you continue to oppose this plan as there are better options available. Development of existing CSX lines for use as light or commuter rail shows a lot of upside as the first phase would connect USF and downtown, with further opportunities to expand in Hillsborough and other counties with pre-existing tracks. Any future bus purchases by heart should be electric as soon as is feasible, since any budgetary decisions you make now commit funds for our county in the long run. Electric buses will cost less to operate because of reduced fuel costs, plus they are quieter and cleaner. CGNG's current low market price is based on environmentally destructive practice of fracking, which is not guaranteed to continue in the future. Water transit is important to our region because of geography that exists here, and it makes any transit system desirable to not only people already living here, but future people and businesses. Fund the Cross Bay Ferry and the Hillsborough County tip, as it's already been funded in the Pinellas County tip. Across Bay water connection helps both counties and will further connect us as a region. Safety is of utmost importance for our county, as we rank near the bottom for pedestrian and bike fatalities each year in the country. Continue to prioritize and make funding available for unincorporated Hillsborough County to combat this terrible epidemic costing us many lives each year. The cities have taken up this cause, but our county is uniquely without many cities, and unincorporated Hillsborough County covers a lot of area. The MPO, being responsible for all the county, needs to fill in the gaps and continue to work with the cities to make our county safer for the most favorable. Thank you.[723.51][723.51](APPLAUSE).
Karen Mikowski, followed by Kevin O'Hare.
Karen Mikowski, are we seeing her address?
No.
Karen Mikowski. Good evening, board members. There was a lot of things I was going to say. Several speakers have already said and stated a lot of items that we should not support. You know, the shoulder lanes, the expanded highways, the BRT, which really isn't a BRT. And then several have been making comments of safety. And the safety is ones that are being reported. I think we really need to take an honest look at how many accidents and deaths are not reported. You think by USF to 275, Fowler to Fletcher, 15th Street has been designated by, designated as a very dangerous street. What about 56th, from Hillsborough all the way to past Bush, all the way to Fletcher? Very dangerous. And then where I am, Harney. You cannot walk on Harney from Sly all the way up to Winn-Dixie, which is Bullard Parkway, or Bush that extends out. And these are, many, many aren't being reported. Now, somebody said, oh, you know, we have the Tampa Regional Transit Plan, our feasibility plan, which is going Wesley Chapel to Tampa. We have horrible, horrible congestion. I sometimes drive south on I-75 and I see going, coming north stopped. They are stopped on I-75. The little trailer going to 301 to pick up I-75 North is stopped. It is literally stopped on I-75. It's unbelievable. Why? Because of all the traffic in South Tampa, all that development, and no solutions to transit options. What are the transit options for there? You are Metropolitan Organization for Hillsborough County. Now, why do we want to invest in our urban service area? Why do we want to start building our buses? Sell it to the county as we're going to get the city and the urban core off the streets. You are going to be able to get down. Then we can start expanding buses and, you know, express buses to the county. But we have to start somewhere, and we have to. Since transport, since growth is going all the way out, we have to figure out a way to help the core, and we have to find a way to get cars off the road. Expanding roads isn't going to work. And if we want to expand roads, then you know what? Here's a crazy idea. Let's start doing the TB Next and completely move it. Take 14 lanes, let's go I-4 straight out all the way to Fishhawk, destroy Allah Brandon, and let's see how many people are going to come and start protesting highway expansion. Absolutely plow through, take the Leroy Salmon, go all the way to Fishhawk, and literally destroy neighborhoods. And how many people will start coming up and saying, "We can't expand roads, we want transit options?" Thank you.
Thank you.[912.32][912.32](APPLAUSE). Kevin O'Hare, followed by Nicole Rice.
Hi, good evening, members of the MPO. My name is Kevin O'Hare. I'm here to speak against the approval of the TIP for the third year for me. It often feels like a family gathering coming to this. No one really knows how to get this many activists and passionate leaders in the room, much like the MPO. Four years it's been since the time has passed since the TIP approval has drawn out large crowds. Four years have passed with inaction leading us no further close to a safer city. Studies and talking heads continue to waste our time as people continue to lose job opportunities, time with loved ones, and even losing their lives. Time is very much of the essence, and as every moment passes with inaction on our fundamental transportation woes, we lose the time with our loved ones that matter. Time is special. It's something that we often take for granted. The time it takes to get from one end of the county to the other, the time we spend walking across the road, the time we spend waiting for the bus to come in the summer rains, the time we lose to traffic spending with loved ones, the time it takes for a vehicle driving at 45 miles per hour to kill a person upon impact. That time, opportunity, and people we've all lost is because of our inaction. With Father's Day coming up, I've also thought about the value of time and my dad, who drove cross-county from Westshore to Brandon for work many days, often on toll roads. Often, he would call me annoyed with traffic, late to dinner, late to events, and late to the constant joys of life. While my dad's story is common and in no way unique, the time we share is precious. I think back on all those memories lost to him stuck in traffic. When you lose someone that you love, those small moments over the course of life are valuable, as many in this room can attest to. One day, we begin to learn the hard lesson of value of time, with understanding that value comes recognizing that we can use our time to postpone action, we can better spend our time moving meaningful action forward, taking every angle and every effort that thinks are transportation woes. To value our time is to value our quality of life. We can utilize our TIP resources to make all of our streets safer, our mobility options increased, and our time with loved ones more common. To do this, we must start by valuing people first. Your action tonight to remove the TBX from the TIP is the first step in putting our priorities where they need to be in our own people. The best lesson I can share with you is that it only takes one moment to make a difference in anyone's life. And I've used roughly three minutes here, but all you have is your vote tonight. I have faith you will make good use of it and you'll use your moment today wisely. Remember, it only takes one. Thank you.[1074.11][1074.11](APPLAUSE).
Nicole Rice, followed by Nina Tatlock.
Is it possible that I can put up on this page of the tip, please?
Five, six.
Yes, and I will. I can see it from there. Okay, is it my turn? Okay. All right. My name is Nicole Rice, Seminole Heights, also on CAC for MPO here. I just, going through a lot of information, I have stacks and stacks of paper I can't begin to get through regarding transportation from planning to information. And I noticed this in the Transit Concept and Alternative Analysis Guide line, or guidance, that FDOT had a study in 2016, and this is what was stated. Jacobs conducted a travel market analysis as part of the regional transit study in March of 2017. The study reveals that 91% of the time a commuter turns a key in Hillsborough County, the driver is headed for a destination in Hillsborough County. The study divided the tri-county region in 28 planning districts and identified the top five commuter trips for each district. The trips are largely local. Not a single of the top 140 regional trips goes across the Howard Franklin Bridge. This study was never presented to TBARDA, the Hart Board, the MPO Board, or the TMA. What this tells us is that 91% of the people in this county need our priority here at the Hillsborough MPO to be Hillsborough. And if we don't get together and work something out here where we start to prioritize some projects, where everybody's going to have to give a little, but ultimately, the data shows over and over that the majority of transit riders typically walk to transit. Nationwide, over 80% of them walk to transit. What that means is we need to have a system that allows for walkability and something that arrives frequently and is consistent. Our plan right now for the BRT, this is a bus station, expansion, and parking lot dump all over the sides of the interstate to get people, what now, 9% to their job that we don't know they have in Pinellas County? So we really need to reevaluate our priorities here as a board. If not, we're going to be in a position here where if TBARDA starts to assume more control of the TMA, especially in TBARDA where we have, what, three votes for our county's interest, we're not going to get anything done. As far as the BRT, there are so many other things that we can prioritize. In the line item right here, it's really imperative, when you look at this, this talks about things that are prioritized by the TMA. What you can see here is, if you look at the project limits on the left there on the top three lines, Westshore Regional Intermodal Center, we've already purchased land for this, Connection to the Airport People Mover. I went to the airport to ride Sky Connect. It's amazing. It's the beginning of a transit system, sitting right there, ready to go over to Westshore and possibly over the bridge. And lastly, of course, we've talked tonight about the CSX Rail Corridor Joint Use connecting South Tampa out to USF. But if you look over here at project status, the one at the top, Central Avenue BRT, these are being funded because they're pushing for funding in Pinellas. We aren't pushing for funding.
Thank you, ma'am.
We need to prioritize these projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1298.77][1298.77](APPLAUSE).
Nina Tatlock, followed by Mariella Smith.
My name is Nina Tatlock. I live in the south part of Hillsborough County. When I drive out 19th Avenue and Ruskin, it makes me sad to see all of the fields that are being turned into developments, also known as sprawl, we've heard people discuss here. I think we need to stop some of this development and paving over our county. I don't believe that Hillsborough County should be strong-armed into taking on all the impact, inheriting all the cost and maintenance with getting zero benefits. We should never be letting the developers get off by reducing the amounts they should be paying. We need public transportation that is environmentally sustainable now and for the future. We need funding for this now. We need to look at using electric buses, using the CSX tracks and the Cross Bay ferries coming from South County. We need safety that puts people first and reduces cars on our roads. I've been in places that have had public transportation, and yes, I have used it. If we had it here, I would use it. We need to make sure that people who do not have cars can get to jobs safely and in a timely manner. And we just need to make sure that people are safe walking on our sidewalks and trying to cross our streets. I thank you for your time.[1418.32][1418.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Mariella Smith, followed by Tracy Crocker.
Hello, I'm Mariella Smith. I'm a longtime activist for growth management and transportation and a candidate for Hillsborough County Commission. We need a robust multimodal mass transit system with everything from buses and ferries to trolleys and rail. We also need to make our streets safe for cars, bicycles, and pedestrians. Hillsborough County has the highest traffic fatality rate of all large counties in the country. Last year, 51 pedestrians were killed and 12 bicyclists were killed. That's not unusual. That's a normal year for us now. Our average is killing one pedestrian per week, killing one bicyclist per month. And on top of the deaths, many more people are seriously injured each year. Preventing those deaths and injuries has to be a priority. Vision Zero is critically important, but I'm going to tell you about one thing that no one is talking about that keeps making our streets more and more dangerous. We have rules requiring complete streets with safe infrastructure for pedestrians and bicyclists, but we keep allowing developers to get around those rules with, by granting them variances or design exceptions. When a developer wants to build a project that would overload a road with traffic, those roads are supposed to be brought up to our complete street standards to handle the additional traffic and still be safe for everyone before the development can be built. Instead, the standard operating procedure in this county is to grant the developer a variance, allowing them to overload the roads with additional cars and trucks without providing safety features for pedestrians and bicycles. The process for that variance is way too easy. It's one decision by our transportation director behind closed doors with no public input. We need to change that process to allow public input and add stronger requirements to ensure that safe infrastructure is provided according to our complete street standards. This is one simple thing that would help prevent the terrible deaths that are constantly happening on our roads. I, I support all the citizens who came here and spoke so eloquently tonight about, and passionately, about mass transit and, and safe streets and, and our quality of life in our community, but I wanted to bring your attention to one thing that I, I didn't think was being discussed at all, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1600.42][1600.42](APPLAUSE). Tracy Crocker, followed by Kipper Young. And Ms. Crocker will have six minutes because Corey Crocker, am I pronouncing her last name right?
Crocker, like Betty, I just cooked Betty.
Yield three minutes, so she has six minutes.
My name is Tracy Crocker. I've spent most of my life being an advocate for the homeless, speaking for those who have no voice. But tonight, and I am going to try really hard not to fall apart, I'm speaking as a mom and a wife. October 24th, my daughter, she was 21, she left my house, we'd had dinner. The last thing I saw was this. Four minutes later, she was gone. I live in the Dona Sasa, the, right off the intersection of McIntosh and 301. If you have ever driven down 301, it's horrible. There's, unless it's Wednesday or Sunday, and look, I'm a pastor, so I can say this, there's, unless, there's no police out there, but unless the church is in session, and nobody pays attention to anything. First thing that everybody thought, because Lacy was 21 and was in a white Camaro, was drugs and alcohol. She just left my house. There were no drugs, there was no, she was awesome. I need a light so no parent has to go through what I've gone through and my family's gone through. My oldest daughter got married in April without her sister. She didn't have a maid of honor because Lacy wasn't there. So I'm asking you, please, put something there, because Lacy's not the first, and if you don't do something, she won't be the last. Thank you.[1722.85][1722.85](APPLAUSE).
Ms. Crocker, we're, we're sorry for your loss, and we'll do whatever we possibly can do. Kipper Young.
Hi, my name is Kipper Young. I'm a 19-year-old college engineering student. I've been very excited to hear about the growth of Hillsborough County because for the longest time, I couldn't wait to get out of here. I, I didn't think there was anything here for me and anything to do, and I was always bored. I love big and beautiful cities, but for some reason, many American cities believe that interstates and the highways are the most effective way to get their citizens around, when in reality, prioritizing these interstates and highways just result in traffic, congestion, road rage, fatalities, unhealthiness, and it all decreases the historic beauty and connection of a, of a city and its communities. I've been driving for a couple of years now, and I can say that I've never once driven on the interstate. I'd rather take a street route, an Uber, or even a train if there was one possible, before I deal with the hassle of driving on an interstate. One, because of the sheer anxiety of getting in an accident. One, because of the sheer anxiety of getting in an accident, and two, the other modes of transportation are just more comfortable and make more sense to me. So, as we continue to grow this beautiful county and build attractions in Tampa, I believe that it is important to prioritize more mass transit and walkable options that will lead to a safer, healthier, and more efficient county for these civilians. Thank you.
Ms. Young, Ms. Young, are you related to Lena Young Green?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And she's your?
Grandmother.
Oh, she's trading you already. Okay. Okay. Our last speaker is Kirk Young, and he will have six minutes because Sky White yielded her time to him.
Thank you so much. I'm used to being the last speaker, so consider this some concluding points. A lot's been said that I agree with, so I won't repeat them. I, too, have been coming to this conversation for a couple of years now and paid very close attention to how the actual discussion unfolds. And I remember being struck the first couple of times of the clarity and the accuracy of the points being made by my fellow residents and community members, only to find myself baffled by the, what seemed to be a lack of response on your behalf to those comments. Now, I don't sit where you sit, and so I don't, I'm not privy to your internal discussions, but what I want to say to you is to think about what this looks like from our perspective. And you've heard some of this already, so I'll be brief. When I come to these conversations, I tend to listen carefully to what's not being said, and I find myself emphasizing two or three points. I've been on record, I'm sorry, my name is Kirk Young, I've been on record emphasizing the African-American perspective in this discussion on transportation and deliberately speaking selfishly from that perspective because quite often you don't hear it. I also spend time trying to emphasize the nature of the communities that we're from. In other words, I try to emphasize in my comments that we are indeed a community of families. And I also try to stress in my conversations with you all the extent to which the community is an informed community, as you can tell. So when we are here speaking to you, we're not reacting. We are immersed in a very disciplined way in these issues that we are speaking to you. We see you and your expertise, we recognize that. We recognize you as skillful political officials, skillful elected officials, skillful public servants. We know that we have captains of industry here. We know that you've been recognized for your own contributions to our beloved community and county. But we also ask that you understand that we in the community also know a thing or two about this discussion, particularly about boulevards and beltways and TBX and TBNX. There are reasons why we speak out against those things. We speak out against them because in many ways, as someone mentioned it very early on in the conversation this evening, that this is in many ways an existential threat to our communities. We're not here because we enjoy this, we're here because we're reacting to what seems to be a threat to our communities. According to federal law and local law, you all, we rely on you all to represent us in preventing those threats from coming to fruition. You are the persons that we rely on. Now, so you've heard a little bit tonight, maybe quite a bit tonight, about elections and votes and remembering, right? There's a political zeitgeist among us right now. There's an international dynamic that's occurring unfolding right before our eyes. We need not say a whole lot about the national political climate, but as we all know, all politics is local. And just as we see the country mobilizing in all various types of ways to address a range of issues, we will mobilize locally when we get the sense that you are not listening to us because we need you to listen to us. I am a political scientist by training, but I have no vision or no goal of being an elected official. I rely on you all, some of you I know very well and very proud of your representation of our communities. But we need you to address and understand these problems associated with the expansion of highways and, most importantly, the negative impact that we know they will have on our communities. So we don't want any more visionless leadership from you. We know you are better than that, and it begs the question, why is it that we walk away and we have to come back every year here to repeat the same things that we've been repeating? We know that you understand this, but you must also know that you can't continue to tell us that the population in the state of Florida is going to expand. We know that. We ask you to provide visionary leadership to help us prepare for that. We understand. Don't tell us anymore that we need regional solutions. We know that. We don't want a regional solution at the expense of Robus Park and Tampa Heights because we know that the solutions are there. We understand the dynamics of the new urbanism. We understand walkability, bikeability, no more cars. We understand these things. We understand live, work, and play in the same location. And so, I don't want to give idle threats, but you're leaving us with no option but to dedicate ourselves to serious efforts to organize our communities for these elections that are coming up, not just with regard to you all, but regard to those who are looking to run for office at the local, state, and federal level so that we can get the kind of results that we need from you. Because again, this is an existential threat to our communities that we are dealing with. Thank you so much.
That's the last name I had on the public comment, so therefore the public hearing is concluded. We're now moving to board discussion and action. Is there any discussion concerning the TIAP?
Thank you.
Well, since no one, you want to say something?
Yeah, well, I'd like to make a comment related to some of the public comments.
Okay, you're recognized.
I want to specifically take a moment to address the comments about Bay Shore Boulevard. Excuse me, I have a little bit of something stuck in my throat. On June twenty-eighth at City Council, we are going to have a robust discussion and report about Bay Shore. I know that Gene Duncan, who is here tonight, who is the city's head of transportation, has been working on a multifaceted analysis of the condition of Bay Shore and looking at a lot of the options that have been publicly mentioned about making it safer. As many of you are aware, when the really tragic circumstances that occurred recently took place, the city was already in the process of narrowing the lanes south of Bay to Bay, finishing the bike lane that was started a number of years ago and was on the way to lowering the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour, and that, of course, was expedited. There are three mid-block crossings being planned for the portion of Bay Shore north of Howard Avenue, and we're now looking at the possibility of adding additional marked crosswalks south of Howard Avenue all the way to Gandy, and we're going to talk on the twenty-eighth about what some of those options might be. We're also going to look at lights, we're going to look at a lot of the different options that can be considered for slowing down the traffic. There have been suggestions made about speed cameras. We are not permitted by law to use them for enforcement purposes, and I do want to point out for everyone that's called for additional enforcement that every single day that I have been on Bay Shore since that accident, and that is, I don't even know if I want to call it an accident, I think that's probably a generous term for what took place, which was a tragedy of the highest order. But we are, we are looking at, in terms of enforcement, TPD has been out there, five percent of the tickets that are issued in the city of Tampa for speeding are issued on Bay Shore Boulevard. I've seen them out there every single day. So the enforcement situation is robust and people are still continuing to speed. So I just want to bring this up about the twenty-eighth so that people that have an interest in this topic will come to the meeting, talk during public comment, hear what the staff has to say is being planned. We're going to ask some tough questions about additional measures that might be taken, whether it's lighted crosswalks, you know, additional pedestrian safety measures, whatever we can come up with that we can do according to the law. I do want to say, though, that one of the things we consider here year in and year out is that the pedestrian and bicycle fatality issue is not just on Bay Shore, it is all throughout this community, it is countywide, and at every single MPO meeting that we have, we hear about additional tragedies taking place. We have all voted in favor of Vision Zero, the city of Tampa has voted in favor of Vision Zero, and I know that I personally, and I speak for many people up here, are totally committed to seeing these types of changes take place on our streets. They are very, very important to keep people safe, and we're going to make them a very important and top priority moving forward. I just wanted to mention that because those that came to talk about Bay Shore tonight, it's not really an issue for the tip, but it is something that's going to be coming up within just the next few weeks at the Tampa City Council.
Thank you, Congressman Cohen. Before I call on Commissioner Kemp, because I know she has a lot to say tonight.
Thank you.
Before you do that, I want to say something here. You're right, it's not only Bay Shore, and it is a tragedy what happened there, but it's across the city and its county. We had the same day someone that was killed on Fortieth Street, and I do understand that the city of Tampa is out there today doing some work on Fortieth Street, and we're going to continue to look at that. But I have a question concerning TBX, and I'm going to ask our executive director, what's in the tip now concerning TBX that could be taken out?
Thank you, sir. And right now, we do have on our priority list a number of projects that are pending, the environmental reviews, supplemental environmental impact statement, and PDNE studies. The department just last month came to us and offered to remove the express toll lanes from I-275 north of downtown Tampa. So if it is this board's direction, we could reflect that in our priority list.
So it's still there, is that what you're saying?
It just says pending the outcome of the PDNE study.
Okay. So therefore, I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice chair and make a motion that those toll lanes, language that's in the tip, be removed.
Second. Second.
Two seventy-five, be removed.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you, and thank you for that motion. That was important, and I appreciate the certainty of that moving forward. I know that FDOT has said that they were doing that, and it was planned to do, which I was very pleased to see, but I like the certainty of the motion and our expression of that, so that's great news, I think, for everyone north of downtown. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know everything you stated wasn't about the tip, but I think we do need a forum for citizens to have an opportunity to come in the evening to a meeting of the MPO with representatives of the city, county, and other transportation agencies to share their transportation and transit concerns, and I deeply appreciate, and I'm sure everyone here deeply appreciates, the really eloquent, passionate, incredibly informed statements that were made. I learned a lot tonight and went through a lot. I know we've, we're right here on the heels, and as I appreciate Councilman Cohen's remarks, I think this community was all taken by the accident, the crash, the terrible tragedy on Bay Shore. And it wasn't, I don't think, as so many have said so well tonight, you know, we have a park, one of the most wonderful pedestrian bikeways, skateways, that is set next to a highway, and you must cross the daunting highway to get to one of this, this wonderful park that can be used for all that. It is a, it was, it's no surprise that we had drag racing going on there at a hundred and two miles an hour. It's designed for that. It has no intersections. The reasons that make it a wonderful, incredible walkway are the same reasons that make it one of the most dangerous places around. When I was down there, I was a little taken aback at the memorial after the crowd moved, and I had heard that Ms. Robinell was in the crosswalk when she crossed, and apparently she was in what we have as a crosswalk there, and I'd like to ask my aide, Ms. Lawson, to put the picture up. I took it with my cellphone because when the crowd moved from the memorial service, I was just taken aback that there was not even paint on the road. It made me choke up, and I just felt devastated by the fact that we didn't have paint on the road. If you can show it from the other side, I took it first of the waterway and then at the other side. And in between there, it's kind of like just a little dirt, piece of dirt where a bicycle tire, I guess, can go through. I was stunned by that alone, I have to say. So I appreciate everyone who has come down and spoken, who also, the accidents that we continually, the accidents, the crashes, the deaths, the deaths that we continually see here in Hillsborough County, all over the place, the woman that was killed the same day at Fortieth Street, I understand it's the second time in a year that someone has been killed there, killed at that intersection of pedestrian. So I'm glad that we're taking some measures there. We saw on Hillsborough Avenue, one of the most dangerous streets in America, again, we had someone crossing in a wheelchair, and he was crossing next to a crosswalk and apparently was waving his hands, it wasn't lit, and he died there, as we saw and were reminded today. I know the city of Tampa, and I'm pleased to hear that, I know Gene Duncan, their transportation chief, was here tonight, and I know they're scheduled to reconfigure Bay Shore this year. I don't think that remake could come soon enough. The plan calls for traffic lanes to be narrowed from twelve to ten feet. I think a lot of people don't realize that this is the single best way to slow down drivers. Bike lanes will be added, several more crosswalks, as Commissioner, as Councilman Cohen said, with flashing beacons. These measures will all give drivers some of the cues they need to slow down. These roads are Bay Shore, and all these roads are dangerous by design. They are these wide sweeping highways that people rush down, and we are not doing enough to change that. That is not just personal responsibility, it is our responsibility, and I think we need to assume that responsibility and make sure changes occur. Bay Shore still needs, and I'm sure you'll hear this at the meeting, I believe anyway, more crosswalks with markings on the roadway at every one of them. I think speed tables should be considered, traffic slowing, roadbeds that are flatter and wider than the speed bumps, they can work with limits between twenty-five and forty-five, and they are deployed in other parts of Hillsborough County, and I think they work well to slow down traffic and should be considered here. You can't give out enough tickets or have enough enforcement, you have to change the shape of the road and change, give the people cues. It is dangerous by design. I've heard very little about this, but in the past five years, New York City has set an example for the nation. They've aggressively and systematically implemented pedestrian and bicycle safety measures under the Vision Zero program. Pedestrian fatalities in New York City have now been reduced, and I almost couldn't believe it, I had to read it several times to make sure it was true, to nineteen-ten levels, saving hundreds of lives. From 2013 to 2017, in New York City, and if they can do this, we can do this, in New York City, traffic deaths declined by twenty-eight percent, and pedestrian deaths are down by forty-five percent. At the same time, across the country, traffic fatalities have continued to rise, increasing by thirteen percent in those same years. So it's way beyond time for us to take action to prioritize safety on our roads. We need to put in force all the measures that we can, the lane narrowing, the crosswalks, the flashing beacons, the speed tables, and all of those don't cost much. What costs a lot is to widen roads. When you're doing these safety measures, they're a lot more cost-effective and they can be done at lower costs than the major road widening projects. So we need So we need, I think, to follow the example of New York City, as so many have said tonight. It is, we are second in the nation, we remain second in the nation over and over and over again, this spot right here, and eight of the most, 10 most dangerous counties in America, the most dangerous metro areas in America, are here in Florida, and that's no mistake. We have had dangers by design here, we have not been doing what we needed to do in Florida to change that. So I, we will, I know, continue working on this, but I appreciate the fact that you all made it a high-profile issue and are telling us that we need to keep being out there and doing, making sure these changes take place. I will say that my number one priority tonight, something I was pleased to see, is that we will be providing, we have third on the list, stormwater, money for stormwater changes at heart bus operations, $3.5 million at the bus facility. It's desperately needed. I think it is a top transit priority, and it should be for the entire region. It doesn't sound quite as sexy, right, as some of the other things, but I will tell you, the bus facility is at number 34. That is my top priority. This is the number one thing we can do to move more people in Hillsborough County. I was there during Hurricane Irma. I know that our former director was desperately afraid that if Irma had hit us head-on, that station, that bus operations center that holds all our buses for this region would have gone down. It leaks, it floods, it's in desperate need of a remake and a redo, and we need to, I think, prioritize that above anything else, because if we, if that goes down during this season, we're going to be in trouble. I want to see that moved right up to the top of everything we do and to focus on that. I also would like to talk for a second about the regional plans, and as many of you have said, this is no plan for the future, and it's not a plan for Hillsborough County. As I've stated before, there's no such thing as highway-oriented development, it doesn't exist, and there's no city in the nation, including Minneapolis, Orlando, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, or anyone else that uses an elevated expressway as what they're calling a spine for transit. In cities across the country, elevated highways only make for minor commuter routes, and that's true in Miami, and that's true in Orlando, and that's true in Minneapolis, that connect their major transit routes, whether those are subways, rail, street-level BRT buses, or ferries. Our transit spines, and there's many of them, need to be walkable, bikeable places. So that's where we need to put our investment and do what we can do. That plan that they have on the table is calling for $455 million, and shockingly, $427 million is to be spent on, I can't even imagine this, Taj Mahal bus stations slash, I guess, parking garages that are in the urban core and along this highway. Of that $455 million, again, $430 million for bus stations, 13 million for traffic signals, 15 million for 11 buses, and zero for operations, which we're going to be expected to cover as well as a huge portion of these costs, and this is not the system that we need to go forward. So I appreciate you coming down tonight and speaking about all these issues, and we'll just have to keep working forward on this.
Commissioner Kemp, be careful, that that 41-mile BRT is not at the tip.
I understand that, and because people were generally talking about it.
I just want to make sure that's not.
I thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Mayor Lot, you're recognized. Push the button there.
Now it is, okay. I thought tonight was a very good night of this change of information. I want to thank everyone in the audience for coming out tonight, taking the time to come out and speaking. There's a lot of passion, a lot of information, and I believe this board is listening, okay? And I think we have shown many times we are listening. I think sometimes when it's, when it looks like we're not listening, it's because a lot of the requests tonight are things this MPO can't help you with. A lot of the requests tonight are, and the reason why I'm mentioning this, because I don't want you to leave and come back here from now going, they didn't do anything. A lot of your requests you have, such as, you know, an interchange, striping roads, this MPO is a funding mechanism, it's a planning organization, but we can't go to the city of Tampa or Plant City or Temple Terrace or the county and say, we want you to put a light there, we want you to stripe this road. That has to be communicated directly with your, with that organization owns that road, that intersection, that bridge, whatever. So I would suggest to you, okay, to take the passion you have tonight, the information you have tonight, and if you, if it's a city road, a county road, a state road, you got to go talk to those organizations, you know, and make sure they hear your voice, because it's going to take the city of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, or the county, you know, to take all those requests that you had, because I heard them in all those jurisdictions, to fix them, okay? Then what they're going to do is pay for it out of their own budget, or they're going to come to us and ask for additional funding, which will, which then we debate here and approve. So thank you so much for your, thank you so much for your input tonight, I thought it was fantastic. I think this is a great annual public hearing we have, I hope it's something we do in the future, but I sure hope we see you in our city commission meetings and our county commission meetings with all the requests you have as well, okay? So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lot. Commissioner Murman, you're recognized.
I was just, I was going to make a motion.
Turn your mic on, turn your mic on.
I was going to make a motion to approve the tip.
You have the floor.
That's it? I'm making the motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Murman, seconded by Mr. Lepano to approve the tip for October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2023. Is any further discussion? Any further discussion? No, sir, you cannot, you cannot, sir. Public hearing, public hearing is closed, sir. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote.
Good evening, Klug.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Mechanic.
Yes.
Gorlick.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hagan is absent. Mr. Lepano.
Yes.
Lot.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Murman.
Yes.
Meniskalko.
No.
Waggoner.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Executive Director, write this report.
Thank you, sir, and I have just a couple of announcements for you before we adjourn. One is that I'm very pleased to let you know that your work was recognized by the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council with a Future of the Region Award for the very first ever Gulf Coast Safe Streets Summit, which this MPO organized to draw attention to the great challenges that we have in this region with traffic safety and the things that we can do and are doing to address those challenges. And, board members, if I could invite you to stay for just three minutes afterwards, I'd like to take a photograph of you with the award. A couple of upcoming items, our next board meeting is scheduled for an unusual day, it is Tuesday, the 31st of July, will be up on the 26th floor at 9:00 a.m. Between now and then, we have two regional meetings. One is the annual meeting of all of the MPO chairs along the I-4 corridor in central Florida. This year, we will be holding that at the Hillsborough Community College campus in Plant City, and the theme will be connecting the markets, and we will also have a guest speaker to talk about new and emerging innovative technology from Hyperloop Transportation Systems. That would be awesome. On July 20th, there will be a regional transit forum at the Tampa Airport. Thank you so much to the airport. And finally, our next workshop on the Regional MPO Planning Best Practices Study, looking at a scenario for a merger of the three MPOs. That has been rescheduled for Monday, August 27th, that will be at St. Pete College Collaborative Labs. That is it, thank you so much.
Any further business coming for us tonight? Seeing none, we adjourn.